This October 2nd, 2025 Kent County Planning Commission meeting to order. If you wouldn't mind standing for our pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地, and justice for all. If you'd remain standing for invocation, please.
As we, the members of this commission, gather here today, we ask that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render service to our fellow citizens and to our community. Let us continue to strive to make a better world by always keeping in mind the enduring values of life, and let us exert our efforts in those areas upon which future generations may build with confidence.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Armbruster. Commissioner Baumgartner.
Here.
Commissioner Burling.
Here.
Commissioner Bethel.
Here.
Commissioner Bridges.
Present.
Commissioner Darple.
Here.
Commissioner DeAngelis.
Here.
Commissioner Dunham.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydrick. Commissioner Herman. Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Farr. Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Sketch.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Wickman.
Here.
We have four.
All right, thank you very much. For those in the audience, we have a brief video outlining our public hearing procedures.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Kent County Planning Commission. Please listen carefully as we explain tonight's proceedings and how you may participate. For a written copy of these procedures, please refer to the Planning Commission's bylaws. Copies of that section can be found on the table at the back of the room. The Planning Commission's chair will open each public hearing item by reading its description. Our staff will then present facts and make a recommendation based on their investigations. Commission members may then pose questions to clarify those facts and recommendations. The commission will then hear testimony from the applicant and the public. The applicant and those supporting the proposal will speak first. Those opposed and those who are neutral or who have questions will then be given the opportunity to speak. If you wish to have the option to speak, you must have registered by signing up at the back table. You can decide later if you want to speak. The chair will poll the audience for anyone wishing to speak on the matter. Only those persons who have registered to speak will be allowed to do so. When the chair calls your name, please come forward to the lectern and state your name, address, and affiliation. If you're part of a group, please consider having a spokesperson speak on your behalf. Once a point has been made by a speaker, it is not necessary to state it again multiple times. Stating that you are in agreement with the previous speaker's opinion is sufficient. Finally, speak into the microphone. This meeting is being recorded for broadcast on cable TV, so speaking clearly will help us hear you and guarantee that your comments are part of the record. Our chair will then provide the applicant and opponents time to rebut any comments, address concerns, and answer any questions. The Planning Commission will recess then for discussion. This gives members time to decide if they have what they need to make an informed decision. While this is an open discussion for all to hear, questions or comments from the audience will not be permitted while the public hearing is in recess. When members end their recess and reopen the hearing, they may ask for clarifications from staff or anyone who gave testimony. They will then close the public hearing and proceed towards a motion, a second, and a vote. Subdivision and waiver decisions are final and go no further. Text and map amendment decisions become recommendations that are sent on to elected officials in the jurisdiction where the site is located. These elected officials have the final say in zoning matters. Feel free to leave once the item in which you are interested has been heard. Items on tonight's agenda were advertised as required by law. Our staff posted a sign on the site and sent notices to property owners when required by state and local law. You do not have to have received one of these notices to speak. Everyone's comments are welcomed. Before we begin, please keep these rules in mind. There are two exits from this room. One is located at the rear of the room. The other is located in the alcove ahead and to your right. Under normal circumstances, please leave the room by the door through which you entered. Fire codes prohibit blocking these doors or the aisles. Please keep these areas clear of chairs and any belongings you may have brought with you. And in emergency, please use whichever exit is closest and use the stairwell outside this room to exit the building. Restrooms and a drinking fountain are available directly adjacent to the elevators. Smoking is not permitted in the building. Food and drinks are not permitted in the public section of this room. Please turn off your cell phone or set it to vibrate so as not to interrupt our proceedings. Thank you for joining us this evening. This process works because citizens like you step up and participate. If you have questions about our processes or issues heard this evening, please do not hesitate to contact our staff here at PDS.
All right, thank you very much. Important part is we need you to sign in on the sheet if you do want to speak or at least have the option to speak, and make sure that you sign in legibly and on the matter that you want to speak about. So, all right. Commissioners, you have in front of you our agenda. We received an email from Park Hills asking to table file number PC-25-0010-TX, which is item number 16. Until the November meeting, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that matter being tabled till November. I'll make a motion.
Second.
First by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Sketch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. You have in front of you the September 4th, 2025, meeting minutes. Are there any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. First by Commissioner Bridges.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. Would you call the roll, Mr. Smith?
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burling?
Abstain.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Darple?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Abstain.
Commissioner Dunham?
Abstain.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Abstain.
And the minutes are approved.
All right, thank you very much. You have in front of you the report of revenues, expenditures, and sureties held for August. Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the receipt of expenditures?
Second.
First by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Darple. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you have the report of last month's actions by staff, including subdivision plots and stage-two updates. Any questions for staff on that?
I have just one. Concerning the City View Station Development lot lot, it's noted in our report that that stage-two development was approved for the apartment phase, which included 273 total units. I think at the time the city voted to approve it, it was 200 units, so I guess just wanted to make sure the city's aware it's 273, and maybe they were, it was all done in collaboration with the city.
Sure, and Patrick Dembo, PDS staff. Yeah, so it was approved by the city at 300 units.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so this is slightly under what was approved by the city.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for that, Patrick. We have no report of last month's actions by legislative bodies because there were none. Brings us to the next item of business, which is a public facility review. It's file number PC-25-007-PF, the Independence Public Facility Review. The applicant is Verdantas by Martin Hellman on behalf of the City of Independence. The location is 5413 Madison Pike in Independence. The request is a public facility review per KRS-100.324 and KRS-147.680. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 2,137-square-foot splash pad with a 1,038-square-foot concrete apron within Memorial Park. Project will include site grading, utility services, new water features, and above-ground recirculation system. Mr. Sheets.
Yep, so thank you for the record. My name is Cody Sheets with PDS staff. As the chair stated, this is a public facilities review for a splash pad located within Memorial Park. As a reminder, KRS requires public facilities to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission decision is non-binding on the facility and is an advisory review on the facility's compliance with the comprehensive plan. The site's located within the suburban subarea. The area of developments roughly 0.35 acres. Here we have an aerial view. The area is highlighted in yellow. Slightly closer view, also highlighted in yellow. Its current zoning is institutional. The existing land use is recreational, institutional, and open space. The applicant submitted a demolition plan, which shows the following to be removed. And they submitted a development plan, which shows a concrete access path, an asphalt path, a retaining wall and fence, and a recirculation system and utilities. Here we have the proposed splash pad, apron, and the splash pad. It will have a variety of age-appropriate zones. And they did submit some renderings here, and additional renderings here, as well as the above-ground recirculation system. So there are sidewalks on adjoining streets, as well as many single and multifamily residential homes nearby. It is consistent with the recommended land use, which is recreation. And there are some DSA areas, as well as some blue line streams on the property, but not where the splash pad's being proposed. We do find the proposed development to be consistent with the following parts of the comprehensive plan. And KRS-100 states that public facilities must be reviewed by the Planning Commission, but that KRS-100 also states that instrumentality of the estate are exempt from zoning regulations or requirements. And staff finds the submitted public facilities you request is generally consistent with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the 2024 Kenton County Comprehensive Plan. We do find that it will provide additional recreational opportunities within Memorial Park. It's located within the interior of the park in an existing open area, and the splash pad is readily accessible from nearby parking lots in adjoining neighborhoods. And again, independence is an instrumentality of the state and therefore exempt from local zoning regulations. So I'd be more than happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Sheets? All right, thank you. I have our applicant, Marty Hellman, and then I also have signed up Erin Cope, I believe that is. Mr. Hellman, you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Marty Hellman with Verdantas, 2161 Chamber Center Drive in Fort Mitchell. Also a city engineer for the City of Independence. And then, would Erin introduce herself?
I'm Erin Cope with the City of Independence, Parks and Recreation Director, 5409 Madison Pike.
I don't really have anything to add to that. I think he covered it pretty well. We think it's a good project, something they've been working on for quite a while. We're looking to have it open in the first half of next year is our plan right now. So just wanted to see if you guys had any questions about the project or concerns or anything, and we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for the applicant?
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, let's see. Do we go ahead and recess for public hearing for discussion among commissioners? Any straightforward? Great. All right, we'll return to the public hearing. Any clarifications needed of the staff or applicant? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and we will entertain a motion. Snyder is not here today, which is rare.
I'll make a motion.
Yep.
Make a motion that we recommend approval of PC-25-0007-PF on basis that it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan based on the report and, uh, report given and testimony given, report given by staff and testimony by the public.
Great.
I'll second.
All right, second by Commissioner DeAngelis, first was by Commissioner Darple. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Darple?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, thank you very much.
Well done, Mr. Sheets, on keeping it brief and quick. That's impressive.
Good luck with the project. Thank you for being here. All right, let's see. Brings us to our public hearing portion. First item is file number PC-25-0011-MA. The applicant is the City of Elsmere, per Marty Lenhoff, mayor. The location is 4501 Dixie Highway, an area of approximately 0.8 acres, located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Eastern Avenue with Dixie Highway in Elsmere. The request is a proposed map amendment to the Elsmere zoning ordinance, changing the described area from NC neighborhood commercial to INST institutional. The city intends to rezone the property so it can be used for future institutional uses. Mr. Dembo.
All right, thank you very much. Patrick Dembo, PDS staff. So as was stated, the City of Erlanger is proposing a map amendment from neighborhood commercial to institutional, again, so that the property can be used for future institutional uses. Sites located within the first ring suburban subarea of the Kenton County Comprehensive Plan. The subject property is currently owned by the City of Elsmere. It is the site of the former Elsmere Police Station. The property contains an existing single-story building with a canopy on the rear. There's currently access from both Dixie Highway and Eastern Avenue. There's also an existing off-street parking lot with approximately 20 off-street parking spaces. The surrounding area consists of a mixture of commercial, office, and residential uses along the Dixie Highway corridor. The area immediately adjacent and behind the site consists of single-family residential, and directly across Dixie Highway is within the City of Erlanger. This is an image looking southeast into the site from Dixie Highway. This is near the existing access point onto Dixie Highway, and again, you can see the building and the parking lot visible here. This is a view looking northwest into the site from Eastern Avenue. Again, this is right across from an access point onto Eastern. And then you can see just above the map on the image that there is a traffic light at the intersection of Eastern and Dixie. And then this is a view looking south along Eastern Avenue from the intersection with Dixie, and the subject site's on the right. Some history for the site includes some map amendments, which added and removed an overlay zone, but the property has long been zoned a neighborhood commercial, part of the neighborhood commercial zone. And then in 2021, the city adopted the new zoning ordinance, where the site remained neighborhood commercial, but the city did also include the institutional zone within the new zoning ordinance, which is a new zone in the City of Elsmere. So again, the site is zoned neighborhood commercial, which is the same to the east, west, and north of the site, and then areas to the south are zoned single-family residential. Existing land use is classified as institutional, but it is currently vacant. Dixie Highway is a major arterial street. Eastern Avenue is a local street. Sidewalks currently exist along both sides of Dixie Highway and on the western side of Eastern Avenue, which is the side adjacent to the subject property. Tank does operate a bus route along Dixie with a stop located directly in front of this property. So the neighborhood commercial zone, which is the existing zone, is intended to provide for a variety of commercial activities that are typically under 20,000 square feet and may be distributed at key intersections in proximities to the neighborhoods that they serve. And the institutional zone, again, which is the proposed zone, is intended for uses that can be viewed as community anchors or assets. The intensity and the purpose of these zones may vary greatly depending on the use, and the zones should be located where proper public facilities and transportation infrastructure exist to support these uses. So this is a table comparing the development standards within the neighborhood commercial and the institutional zones. The institutional zone has a minimum lot size of one-half acre, where the neighborhood commercial zone does not have a minimum lot size. There's also a decrease in lot width and front yard setback within the institutional zone, as well as an increase in maximum building height. This is a table comparing the number of uses that are permitted within each zone. In general, there's a large decrease in the number of commercial uses permitted within the institutional, and an increase in the number of institutional uses permitted. The overall effect is a decrease in available uses overall within the institutional zone. Map amendments submitted by a legislative body are not required to submit a development plan, and the minimum area for a freestanding institutional zone is 20,000 square feet. The subject site is approximately 35,000 square feet. Staff conducted a review of the comprehensive plan, finds areas of consistency. The proposed map amendment will allow a different mix of institutional uses, which may promote reinvestment and alternative development forms within an older commercial area, which may be needed to maintain the area's vitality. The development is consistent with the recommended land use, which is identified for commercial. Although the institutional zone does not provide the same number of uses within the commercial use categories, the existing neighborhood commercial, it does still allow limited commercial uses with a wider variety, of course, of institutional uses. The commercial designation within the comprehensive plan does state that these areas can include a mixture of sales, service, office, or entertainment uses. Service uses with associated offices are certainly available to institutional zones. The site does not contain any areas of DSA or blue line streams. KRS-100 states that a map amendment must be in agreement with the comprehensive plan, or that the existing zoning classification is inappropriate, or that there have been major changes that were not anticipated in the adopted plan. Staff is providing a favorable recommendation on the, uh, on the map amendment. The proposed amendment is generally in agreement with the adopted plan. The requested institutional zone may promote reinvestment in this property, which has long been utilized as an institutional use, by allowing a different mix of uses than what is currently available within the commercial zone. Be happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions?
Mr. Dembo, just a quick one. So going to the institutional zone, it allows a little more freedom to become something in that zone as opposed to the neighborhood commercial?
Correct. The neighborhood commercial zone offers less of the institutional uses.
Do you have any idea what they're planning for the site?
Nothing has been submitted.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so, yeah. All right, I have signed up Mr. Zerhuzen. You'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Chris Zerhuzen, represent the City of Elsmere, 3921 Dixie Highway, Elsmere, Kentucky. As far as the use for the zone, we do have it under contract currently. They've completed their phase one and phase two, and I won't know if I can exactly share what it's going to be, but the city council's in favor of it. They passed a resolution in April promoting this rezoning, I guess, so if you have any other questions, be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Zerhuzen? Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll recess the public hearing for discussion among commissioners. Any thoughts, comments? All right, we'll return to the public hearing. Any clarifications needed? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I'm the commercial.
All right.
Make a motion that we offer a favorable recommendation to file PC-25-0011-MA on 4501 Dixie Highway for the proposed map amendment, changing it from neighborhood commercial to institutional, based on the fact that it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, based on staff's report and the testimony given at the year.
All right.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bethel, first was by Commissioner Darple. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Just have a comment?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Just for the information, the site plan doesn't say it's a neighborhood.
I saw that.
Commissioner Darple?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Good luck with the project and the sale. All right, next item is file number PC-25-0012-MA. The applicant is Oak Ridge Baptist Church in Sanitation District Number 1, per Larry Snodgrass, Chairman of Trustees for Oak Ridge Baptist Church. The location is an area of approximately 0.9 acres, located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Taylor Mill Road and Clubhouse Drive in unincorporated Kenton County. The request is a proposed map amendment to the Kenton County zoning ordinance, to change the described area from R1C, a single-family residential zone, and NC, a neighborhood commercial zone, to R1E, a single-family residential zone. All right, Mr. Bedekovich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name's Andy Bedekovich with staff. As you just read, this is a rezoning in unincorporated Kenton County. The site in question is located south of I-275 along Kentucky 16. It's located between Hands Pike and Senior Road, again, at the intersection of Clubhouse Drive and Kentucky 16. So the site is just under an acre. It is located on the southeast corner of Taylor Mill Road and Clubhouse Drive. The site is, uh, is in the former city of La Tonia Lakes, which unincorporated in 2006. The areas to the north and east of the site were also a part of the former city and are characterized by residential homes. There is a mixture of commercial, institutional, and larger lot residential within the vicinity as well. There is an existing single-family story commercial building on the site, as well as a detached garage. This is looking at the site from the intersection of Clubhouse Drive, which is in the foreground in Kentucky 16, which is on the right-hand side of the screen. This is the existing, uh, single-story commercial building. This is looking at the main entrance of the building, which is facing Clubhouse Drive, so this is Clubhouse Drive in the foreground. The site currently has an off-street parking area with a paved driveway that goes out to Taylor Mill Road, which we will see in a second. The off-street parking area has six parking spaces that access directly off of Clubhouse Drive. There is a walkout basement on the rear of the building, facing Taylor Mill Road, so this is Taylor Mill Road now on the left-hand side. This is the paved access point that I was talking about that provides access to the detached garage, which is to the right, which we'll see in a minute, as well as to the front of the building and the off-street parking area. This is just moving back a little bit farther on Taylor Mill Road, so you can see where the detached garage is. This is the commercial building on the site, and there actually is another access point that leads back to a 400-square-foot lot that's owned by SD1, and they have some equipment back there that, that they need access to through, through this site. This is turning looking almost directly south along Kentucky 16. The reason why I'm showing this is because this is Oak Ridge Baptist Church, which is the applicant this evening, and I just wanted to show the proximity of the site in question to, to that church. And you'll also notice that there are sidewalks along Kentucky 16 as well. And then this is a street view from October 2024, but I took this picture just to give you an idea of what the residential area is like a little bit farther down from Clubhouse Drive. Again, this is the former city of La Tonia Lakes. It's now unincorporated Kenton County, but it's typical, typically characterized by these narrow residential streets and smaller single-family residential homes. So the zoning of the site is currently mostly neighborhood commercial. There is a small sliver of the property that is zoned R1C, so that's why the R1C zone's also included in this, in this map amendment. The area to the south of the church property is zoned R1C. Across the street, it's zoned suburban residential, as well as commercial mixed-use that is within the City of Covington. And then to the north and east of the site, it's zoned R1E, which is what the applicant is requesting this be rezoned to. And then there's also an area of neighborhood commercial that continues north along Kentucky 16. 16. The existing land uses I touched on, but this just shows what the existing land uses are in the area. So again, to the north and east, you've got single-family residential homes, institutional uses to the south, as well as across the street, and some commercial uses also mixed in as well. So the R1E zone that the applicant has requested permits, single-family residential. Now, the applicant has indicated that they intend to use the site for church outreach and ministry. The R1E zone also permits churches and other buildings for the purpose of religious worship, provided they're located adjacent to an arterial street, as a conditional use. Conditional uses must receive approval from the Board of Adjustment after a public hearing, and the board may place additional conditions and restrictions on the development if they feel it necessary in order to properly integrate the use into the surrounding neighborhood. Development plan is not required for rezonings to single-family residential. If the MAP amendment is approved, further review of the site plan and compliance with the zoning ordinance will occur at the conditional use stage of the process, as well as with the permitting phase of the process. Taylor Mill Road is identified as a collector, or, excuse me, not a collector, an arterial. Senior Road, which is located just to the south of the site, is identified as a collector. As I mentioned, there are sidewalks on both sides of Taylor Mill Road. Clubhouse Drive, as well as all of the roads within the former city, are identified as local streets, and there's no sidewalks or lane markings along those streets. So staff finds that while the applicant has indicated that they intend to seek conditional use for the church outreach, that it's still, you know, even just rezoning to single-family residential is still consistent with the goals and objectives in housing. If the conditional use permit is, for some reason, denied, it would still be zoned single-family residential, and it could still help provide for housing opportunities in an established residential area. There are some other relevant areas of the comprehensive plan. Again, the goals, objectives, mobilities, and community facilities. The applicant intends, they certainly intend to use this property as a church outreach. As I stated before, that requires a conditional use process. We're not quite there yet, but that will be an additional step. The other thing that I want to mention is the access points. So they have the, almost the continuous access point along Clubhouse Drive, and then they have two access points onto Taylor Mill Road. Access to the site will need to be evaluated, again, as part of the conditional use process. However, we would recommend that the applicant perhaps begin coordinating with KYTC, because whatever they're required may end up having an impact on what they plan to do. The site is identified for residential development at 4.1 to 7 dwellings per net acre. The R1E zone allows for residential development at 5.81 dwellings per net acre. So again, if for some reason the conditional use for the church and ministry use doesn't pan out, it still would be consistent with the recommended land use. There is no DSA. There appears to be a blue line stream. However, that may be a roadside ditch in this area. We covered what the necessary findings were for a MAP amendment in the previous presentation, and staff is giving this a favorable recommendation. The basis is that it's generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. And again, while we don't have a development plan to review right now, further review will occur in the future for any conditional use permit or zoning permits. I mentioned the non-conforming access points along Taylor Mill Drive, and also the need for a conditional use permit. That conditional use permit, it does involve notifying all of the adjacent property owners in another public hearing before the Board of Adjustments. So while the rezoning's being considered now by the Planning Commission and ultimately the fiscal court, the final use of the site, there will be another, more detailed public hearing on that specific use at a future date. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Bedekovich?
I have one for...
Mr. Sketch.
Andy, since SD1 is part of the zone change, can we assume that SD1 is part of the outreach is going to be part of that project?
Yeah. When they come through, they will be notified as part of that project. The reason why SD1 was included in the zone change is just because they have that, it's really odd, but it's a 400-square-foot parcel, and if they had not been included, it wouldn't have been like a big deal, but it would have just made for like a really small little island, and so the applicant reached out to SD1, and they wanted to be, you know, agreed to be included.
So it's just a small square down there?
Yeah. It was really just that little, small square thing.
And this is just, you know, from information you probably don't know, but why would a residential zone go down there where you can't build on it?
I'm sorry?
The residential zone line. I mean, it just cuts that sliver off of that.
Yeah.
Because that could have been part of any reconstruction of 16?
So that's kind of what I'm thinking, and it also follows the jurisdiction boundary line there. The jurisdiction boundary line kind of cuts, doesn't follow the center line of the road. So I'm thinking maybe at one point in time, it may have followed the road, and then the road got shifted as part of the redevelopment.
Thank you.
And Mr. Burling.
Andy, real quick. The difference between 1C and 1E besides unit density, is there anything significant other than unit density?
No. You're correct. The R1C is 3.4, 3.5 dwellings per net acre. That's the only difference. Conditional use-wise, they allow the same conditional uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Darple.
Just on the west of the site, I guess it is there, towards Pine Road there, are we leaving a little institutional triangle? And is it zoned that way if you go back to your map?
Yeah. So again, I think that that is following the jurisdictional boundary right now, so you see this line coming across here. And so really, this entire side across the street from the site is in Covington, and basically has its own zoning.
I'm talking about on the other side. Go to your colored zoning, or your colored current zoning.
Backside of that lot, Andy, there's a triangle right there.
Right there where you're...
The blue, blue triangle in the back.
Sure. So that is currently zoned R1E right now, in terms of like what the recommended land use is. I mean, that's what it's identified as an institutional use, but I'm not really sure what that use is, other than maybe it kind of identified the whole lot as institutional just for the SD1.
I just didn't know if we're all of a sudden going to be left with that.
No, no. So, no, we are including the whole area.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have signed up to speak, Larry Snodgrass, the applicant, and Tammy Tracy is neutral. Mr. Snodgrass, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Larry Snodgrass, trustee chairman of Oak Ridge Baptist Church, address 6036 Clubhouse Drive. And he's really already presented pretty much everything. Specific uses haven't been determined yet. The building committee of the church is currently working on that, exploring potential uses for the different areas. Some of the things I've heard of peripherally are, we have a pretty good youth outreach. We do tutoring, after-school programs, that sort of thing. So we actually moved some out to the new property and carried on there. Also, there's a large area, we do a lot of packing boxes for Operation Christmas Child, and it's grown to the point that now it's really a major task to, every time I have to get together to pack boxes, I have to bring all the stuff out and unpack it and lay it out, and then if we have a funeral or a meal or something like that, put everything back away. So this would give us enough space, they'd have it set up and have more space to have to go through that.
Any questions for Mr. Snodgrass? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Tracy?
My name's Tammy Tracy, 508 Lakeside Drive. I'm that little dot on the corner up there. On the left-hand side is my property, so that connects right to me. I just wanted to make sure of what kind of outreach they were going to have. They have the lighthouse, which is, if you showed the front of the barber shop that they showed, they want it, right across the street, they have the lighthouse also. There's traffic there all the time for the, I don't have a problem with them out helping, that's awesome, but I just don't want it at my back door, where if they're going to have cars parked on that, where the sanitation is, if they're going to have, I just wanted to know that we're not going to have a drug rehab and have all kinds of stuff. I just want to know what more they're going to be doing there, and they're not going to build a building right there. It says existing properties, which I'm good with. I just want to know more of what's going right there.
Well, you heard Mr. Snodgrass.
I did.
Share his ideas, and I don't know, I mean, would rehab facility be available in this zone, even with the conditional?
[inaudible]
Would you come back up to the mic, please?
Sure. Yeah. Well, basically, we're going to remodel and rehab existing structures. Don't really plan to build anything new. And the youth group are from back there in the lakes, and, you know, I've met with some of those, and our program really seems to be helping them to develop as responsible adults.
No, it's awesome what you guys do there. I don't have any proof. That's all great. I just wanted to know what was coming to my back door.
Oh, no, I don't think anything's going to be moving closer. Just really depending on how they use it. They make paved bottom part around the garage, but that's the only thing I really foresee at this moment. And there again, it's going to depend on building codes and Planning Commission requirements.
All right. As you, as they know, I have a handicap, I have two handicaps in my home, and we sit out in the back a lot, and I just want to know what is going to be back there before I allow them to go out there and sit. They're mentally challenged, and I just need to know what's going to be going on back there. You know, I mean, as you see, sometimes there's kids everywhere, and when you do the food pantry, you can't drive through there, and I think the food pantry is awesome. It just needs to be managed a little bit better, and I just want to make sure that's going to be managed a little bit better.
Yeah.
So that's just my concerns.
I'll answer your questions satisfactorily.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We'll recess the public hearing for discussion among commissioners. Pretty straightforward. We'll return to the public hearing, any clarifications needed, staff or the applicant. We'll close the public hearing, we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Vaughn?
I would move for the approval of file number PC-25-0012-MA, applicant Oak Ridge Baptist Church in Sanitation District Number One, of an area of approximately 0.9 acres located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Taylor Mill and Clubhouse Drive. The proposed MAP amendment would change the described area from R1C and NC to R1E. I would move that we approve this based on the testimony of staff and witnesses present here today, and a finding that it is, in fact, consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wickman. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Darple?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. Next item is file number PC-25-0013-MA. The applicant is CPH Consulting LLC, per Stacy Ranucci, on behalf of CFA Fort Wright LLC. The location is 3436 Madison Pike in Fort Wright, an area of approximately 1.37 acres located along the east side of Valley Plaza Parkway between Viewpoint Drive and Highland Pike. The request is an amended concept development plan within a PUD, Planned Unit Development Zone, of the Fort Wright zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking site modifications to improve drive-through stacking lanes, including the extension of the existing drive-through lanes to two lanes, which decreases the number of parking spaces. All right. Ms. Bessie.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Megan Bessie, and I am with PDS staff. As stated, this is a request to amend a concept plan within a PUD in order to improve drive-through stacking lanes. The site is located in the suburban subarea of the 2024 Kenton County Comprehensive Plan, as noted by the red star. The site in question is 3436 Madison Pike. It currently contains a combination restaurant with associated parking and one drive-through lane. There is one access point that's on Madison Pike, and one access point that's on Valley Plaza Drive. Both provide direct access to parking areas. The surrounding area is largely built out with commercial and restaurant uses. This is looking south with the site in question on the right side of the screen, and Madison Pike on the left side. The sidewalk is present along Madison with a sidewalk access to the site. This is looking north with the site on the left of the screen. You can see the sidewalk along Madison Pike and the access point from the site to Madison. This is looking west into the site, where you can see the current flow of traffic. There are five parking spots right in front of that car that you have right there in front of the screen there, and then one stacking lane that splits into two as you get closer to the canopy. This is looking north at the shared access between restaurant uses, and there, you can see the beginning of the five parking spaces, which will be removed in this request, along the left side of the screen. So you'll see that one spot on the left side of the screen. That's part of the five that will be removed. This is looking north on Valley Plaza at the access point to the site, and you can see the signage, and you can also see the split two stacking lanes on the right side of the screen. This is looking east into the site from Valley Plaza, where you can see the one lane that accesses the stacking lanes, and one lane that circulates through the existing parking area. In July of 2014, there was a submitted application to the Fort Wright Board of Adjustments to appeal the zoning administrator's decision to deny the applicant's request to seek a reduction from off-street parking requirements for a restaurant. The Fort Wright Board of Adjustments took action to overturn the zoning administrator's decision, allowing for a provision of 65 parking spaces. In August of 2014, there was a Stage One development plan for an approximate 1.19 acres, which included the site in question, and KCPC recommended approval of the amended Stage One development plan, subject to three conditions. The city subsequently approved the amended Stage One development plan as well, subject to the three conditions listed. In March 2015, there was a submitted Stage Two development plan for an approximate 1.19 acre area for the construction of an approximately 5,000-square-foot drive-through restaurant and associated parking. PDS staff recommended favorably, subject to three conditions. The city staff subsequently approved the Stage Two development plan, subject to the two conditions listed. In March of 2020, there was a submitted Stage Two development plan for the construction of two canopies, one over the drive-through order station and one over the drive-through pickup window. PDS staff recommended favorably. City staff subsequently approved the Stage Two development plan, and this plan at the time did not include the installation of windscreen elements, which brings me to 2022. There was a Stage Two development plan that provided for the installation of three windscreens to two existing accessory structures, and the installation of another windscreen fence to an existing Chick-fil-A. PDS staff recommended unfavorably for the reason listed on the board, the project was inconsistent with the surrounding PUD. So the current zoning is PUD, and surrounding also to the northwest and south, and then there's the community commercial to the east. For existing land use, it is commercial, and that's also surrounding to the northwest and south, with vacant right-of-way to the east. Valley Plaza Parkway is classified as a local street. Madison Pike is classified as a major arterial. Orphanage Road is classified as a major collector. Sidewalks exist along both sides of Valley Plaza Parkway, and sidewalks exist on the west side of Madison Pike. Tank operates bus routes along Valley Plaza Parkway. So the existing conditions, this is that site plan that was originally approved, the there is a, the outline of the property line is in black, and then the Chick-fil-A restaurant is outlined in blue. It currently has one drive-through lane that splits for two ordering points. That brings the impervious area to roughly 80.9%, and open space area to roughly 19.1%. That brings the impervious area to roughly 80.9% and open space area to roughly 19.1%. There are 67 parking spaces. And again, that single access drive-through lane, which splits into two lanes, is already highlighted in red that I mentioned. There are two canopies, one that's over the two lanes and one that's over the drive-through pickup window. And then there's access to the site via a right-in, right-out on Madison Pike. And then there's a second access from Valley Plaza Parkway. There is also cross-access drives to adjacent properties on either side. And the pedestrian access from existing sidewalks on Madison Pike to the structure that you saw in the real-time photos. So the proposed new changes, again, the property line is outlined in black. It's just a little bit of a different orientation. There is an extension of the drive-through lane to two lanes. Each will be nine and a half feet wide. The drive-through lanes will be separated by a four-foot-wide diagonal striping, single yellow line. Transition curbs will be added to the crosswalk, which is located through the drive-through lanes. And then transition curbs will also outline the sidewalk that attaches to the drive-through lanes also. There will also be a drive-through clearance bar noted by the black dot. And then all signs have a seven-foot minimum clearance from finish grade to bottom of the lowest sign that's mounted. A note indicating that all signage, including regulatory signage, shall meet the local agency design guidelines and manual on uniform traffic control devices requirements was added on the, on the submitted, on the submissions. The drive aisle of 14 feet width, and this is for the general one-way traffic circulation through the associated parking. And then separating that is a two-foot-wide diagonal striping, single yellow line. That brings your impervious surface area to roughly 81.72% and your open space is decreasing to 18.28%. And again, I spoke about the elimination of the five parking spots. Because I moved it, it's not going to do it. See if I can get it. There we go. So what I did was is I overlaid the original plan to show where the five parking spots were. That's where they'll be eliminated to add in that second drive-through lane. And then there's additional notes that 62 parking spaces will remain. 29 parking spaces are typically required for this use type, but because this is a PUD, it's, it's as noted on the plan. There is also a note to protect existing underground stormwater management system to seal and coat, re-stripe any asphalt where necessary. And all affected sidewalks, ramps and crosswalks will be built, inspected and meet ADA compliance. So key changes, total impervious area is going from 80.9% to 81.72%. Your open area is decreasing slightly. Drive-through lanes, right now it's one, it's going to be two. The total width of the drive-through lanes is going from 15 feet to nine and a half feet, where nine feet is required. The total width of drive aisle for general access was 28 feet previously, but going to 14 feet. And then the total parking spaces is going from 67 to 62. So staff finds the proposed amendment is consistent with the 2024 Kenton County Comprehensive Plan. The proposed development will promote a business-friendly environment and will help to maintain the quality of an existing commercial area by promoting means to maintain its vitality. The proposed development is consistent with the recommended land use map, which identifies the site for commercial, and the proposed development will help to strengthen the existing commercial business. The portion of the site that fronts Valley Plaza Parkway does contain areas of DSA and there are no blue line streams located on the site. KRS 100 states that a map amendment must be in agreement with the comp plan or that the existing zoning classification is inappropriate or that there have been major changes that were not anticipated in the adopted plan. A favorable recommendation on the amended concept development plan with a PUD zone for the Fort Wright zoning ordinance and the proposed amended concept plan is generally in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. The project will remain, will maintain the vitality of the existing commercial development while promoting a business-friendly environment. And the proposed amended concept development plan is generally consistent with the requirements of the Fort Wright zoning ordinance. If approved, the development will be subject to all required permits, including zoning and building permits. Staff also recommends an additional crosswalk to connect the other sidewalk transition into the drive-through lanes for safety. While not required as part of the map amendments, the following are required for the final development plan and that includes character standards, sight lighting, landscaping, hillside protection, excavation grading and et cetera, and signage. I would also like to remind the commission that Fort Wright has adopted the 21-day rule where if this recommendation tonight is not appealed within 21 days, the action becomes final. The waiver form is on the back table if anyone wishes to appeal and send this matter before council. At this time, I can take any questions you may have.
All right, any questions for Ms. Bessie? Very good, thank you. All right, I've signed up Stacy Ranucci with Chick-fil-A Four, our applicant. Brent Lynn, also with Chick-fil-A Four, and Darren Adams, also with Chick-fil-A Four.
Hey, good evening. My name is Stacy Ranucci. I am with CPH Consulting, 500 West Fulton Street, Sanford, Florida, 32771. I am here tonight representing Chick-fil-A. We're the engineering consultant that has worked on this project. Megan's slides showed beautifully what we were proposing. I did do a couple slides myself that I can show you as well. What I did want to present also is a slight different configuration to the drive-through to improve the stacking even further by making a dedicated turn into the drive-through so that it didn't back up the cross-access easement along the front of the property. And if you don't mind, I can share that with you. It's still consistent with what we proposed of the site plan with the two lanes. The only difference would be to where they can turn directly right into the drive-through. We did share this with the city administrator of Fort Wright and we did discuss with county staff as well. And they said, we will have to go through a final development plan process for approval, regardless of which plan that moves forward and that transportation and zoning and all the applicable departments would review it to make sure that it does meet standards. So I wanted to share that with you and I could also bring up the owner-operator of Chick-fil-A to discuss the reasons of why this may make more sense. This is the same plan that you saw on there, but the red is the change. So what it allows is cars that are coming from the Burger King up at the end. And what's happening right now is they're at the stop sign and it's basically a four-way. All the traffic from Madison Pike has right-of-way. They don't stop and they go straight into the drive-through. So cars that are coming from that stop sign there are not able to enter the drive-through and it causes extreme backup throughout that entire parking lot going through the whole service road there. And by having a dedicated turn to where those patrons can turn right into there, we think it's just going to improve it even more, you know, with the conflicting traffic movements that are happening. Brent can discuss, he knows how many cars come from each direction. It's his business and this was his idea of a way to correct a situation that is occurring out there.
Can I stop you for a second, Mr. Smith? I mean, because this is a concept development plan, right, where it's got to be pretty detailed. Are we able to approve this revised version now?
I think since it was noticed and since it, that there was going to be a revised plan, then I think we are able to look at it. I certainly think since it's just been presented tonight, which we normally don't encounter, that, you know, we, we can either make a decision tonight or if we need additional review from staff, we can get additional review from, from staff, but I do think we're able to proceed on that.
All right, okay. Ms. Lynn?
Hello. Brent Lynn, owner-operator of the 3436 Madison Pike, Fort Wright, Kentucky, Chick-fil-A. I presented an idea, thought to Chick-fil-A Inc. about seeing some safety hazards, especially on 17, even all the way through Valley Parkway behind us where there's a lot of confusion with a four-way stop. Yes, one group off of 17 has the right-of-way, but we get extremely busy from 12 to 1 and from 6 to 7 and 7 to 8 and so forth. And we've actually, we have a lot of police officers that dine with us a lot and they tell us that it's kind of a thorn in their side to have moving highway traffic stopped because of our drive-through. And obviously, we don't want that safety hazard and we want people on our lot. We specifically chose those five parking spaces because they're completely blocked off for about 60 to 70% of the time. But even on the slow period, which was shown with pictures, people were parked all the way in the back. Nobody was still parked there. So they're unused and the vast majority of the time were open. And I thought it would be a more useful use of the, the space to, for safety and to get people on our lot, not sitting on 17 where there's already a lot of traffic anyways. Any questions on that?
So help us understand how this, this change is going to impact it. Because now I guess the, the cars coming in from 17 aren't able to get in the other lane, right? So now they're down to one lane. Walk, walk us through how that, this.
Right, so about 30, depending on the day, obviously, but about 35 to 40% of our guests come in through the Valley Parkway because they're not allowed to turn left, so they have to come all the way back around. Those people, along with the occasional people coming up from the south, fight with 17 into this one lane of traffic. So what this will do, will give a dedicated lane to Valley and then a dedicated lane straight in from 17 where they don't have to fight with each other trying to honk horns and, you know, nudge in and try to cut the other person off. And that's, the cutting off is where, where the, the traffic hinders into 17. So this will be, since they're turning right, they'll just come straight into the, the closer side of our, my restaurant's lane. And then the Valley people will also have a dedicated lane. So just, it makes, the two busy parts, there's maybe 3% of our guests come from the south. All the rest will have a dedicated lane, if that makes sense.
So essentially, you're saying 35% of the cars coming in are coming in from the north?
Correct.
65 are coming in from the east?
Correct, yes, yes.
You're creating a new lane for the 35.
Yes, and so that the 65 can get off of the highway. That's, that's the most important part. Like, my guest fight, I hate to see it, but it's more the, the people that are sitting there. I mean, even on my opening weekends, one of my team members wrecked on my opening weekend. So I knew it was going to be an issue and this is nine years later when we've only gotten busier. Now, our guests have kind of learned a little bit, but for the new ones, or the people that are just trying to commute to work or, or school, they're getting stuck in a traffic that hopefully this would alleviate.
Mr. Smith?
Just a question. Why is this just now being presented? Why wasn't submitted earlier to staff for review?
So the plan that was included with your packet showed it as one entrance that broke into two. And the reason it was done that way was at the pre-application meeting with the county and the city staff, they didn't want to have the stop sign, stop bar pushed back, thinking that it was going to cause intersection visibility issues. We came up with a way yesterday of how we could make this work with that striped area, leaving the stop bar in the same spot it is now and the stop sign could go in that striped area. So there's not going to be any visibility issues. We're not pushing the stop bar back. And that was part of the reason why we spoke with Jill Bailey at the city, because she was the one who had voiced concern and that's why it was done the other way. When we brainstormed and came up with this other option, we were immediately like, hey, what can we do? We spoke to her, we called Megan and we're like, it's still the intent. We still have the two lanes. It's just that instead of it being mouthed down to just one entrance that breaks off, it's two, straight through.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
With regard to the marking, is this simply marking or is there like a hump to keep people in their lanes or that?
No, there is just striping. It's just marking and shaving.
That is, okay.
We, we look at that sometimes and depending on the type of vehicle, they might not be able to make as tight of a turn and when they're coming in that way. With the striping, it, it gives a little bit of alleviating there. Plus, the striping is where the staff walks down with their little iPads and takes orders. And if it was a raised mound or anything, that would be unsafe for them. So that's why it's a four-foot in between so they can walk between cars safely.
But at the location of the existing stop sign, you're saying that is just a stop sign and a bollard. There's no curve around it?
No.
Out there in traffic?
Yes, it'll have the striping all around it and it'll be in it. So where the stop bar is, it'll be right next to it at the corner and there will be bollards around it. It's not in a typical landscape bed, you know, it's, it'll be in pavement with bollards surrounding it.
And, and the variation of this plan from what we saw earlier is only a matter of striping and the location of that stop sign. There's no change in pavement perimeter, is that correct?
It pulls back the curve there. It actually kind of, yeah, it pulls back the curve just slightly so that it's two entrances instead of just one lane. It makes it dedicated, so it does pull back the, the curb line.
And that's on the inside of the top red line?
Coming in from the north on your right.
Yes, yes, the top red line there that curves. And I wanted to mention, this would obviously be drawn to engineering plans and, and things like that. And we just didn't want to table the meeting because the intent was still the same development plan that we were coming in with. It was just actually a, a, a better improvement, we felt. So we still wanted to present it to the board and see if we could. And when the county insisted, they're, you're like, you're still have final development plan and building permits. This is going to be reviewed by staff, city and county. So they do have an opportunity to deny it in this configuration.
Any questions? Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Bridges?
For the, for the operator there.
Yes.
So since you started your rep, so it looks like you're increasing your accessibility for the drive-through and kind of decreasing your viability for the eat-ins. Has, has the percentage of eat-ins versus drive-through changed since you started? Has, have you seen it? Is it more to the drive-through or has it stayed the same?
Oh, it's, it's increased in the drive-through, but I think that's a lot of the ingenuity of Chick-fil-A that you, you mentioned, she mentioned the iPads, my staffing awareness, but, and obviously the, the big C word, COVID, changed a lot of people's eating habits. So they figured out they, they can get food a lot quicker through our drive-through. So yeah, I, I, about 28% of our, our sales come from dine-in and a good 60-plus percent come from drive-through and then there's third-party and catering, so, Door dashes and things like that.
So that would be a change in economic circumstances then, how the, how the market has changed more to the drive-through than the eat-in?
In my location, it has gotten busier, but I think a little bit of that is our, our speed and, and our attention to it versus the dine-in piece. But in the long and short of it and with the changes there, with only the one lane coming in, it still didn't really alleviate the fear of wrecks that have happened on 17 because of our, our drive-through, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, real quickly, can I ask a question of staff or do I have to wait for another time to do that?
We're going to have staff come back up, yeah, right. Any other questions?
Could I add? It's definitely, this was motivated by safety improvements. It wasn't to increase the number of cars he can get there. He's going to have the same. He's going to have the same number of cars regardless if it's like this, or if it's just the one lane or two lanes. This was about fixing the issue with the incoming traffic coming from Madison Pike and the cross-axis there. It's an issue with the vehicles backing up. And so we were just trying to maximize the property that's there to get cars out of that intersection. And that was the goal.
Yep, got it, thank you. Yeah, sure.
Do most of your facilities have like pylons separating the drive-through lanes, or do they have striping?
They, we always go within striping, and then some operators will put in like little deflector poles that if they did get hit, they just are flexible. And that's an operator, you know, request if they want to do those as well. But we typically only propose it with striping at all locations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think Darren Adams?
I have nothing further to add, I was on there just in case there was any other.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Was this Andy? Did you present, who presented this? Oh, Megan, that's right, she was very thorough, she was very good. Mr. Bethel, come back up. So I don't know when you first saw this and your thoughts about the revised plan, if you're comfortable with it, or if you feel you need to consider this more?
So, we talked about it yesterday, it came in at around 4 o'clock yesterday. So we talked about it, we went over it, I discussed it with Andy. This isn't something that we as staff would review potentially, like, we don't, there's nothing in the zoning code on this for this specific request. But we did talk about it, that it would have to be within the final development plan, there are permits involved, everything's looked at again. If there were issues, they could be adjusted then as well. So for the most part, yes, we're pretty comfortable with the plan.
Okay, Mr. Burling?
Yeah, Megan, I just have one quick, this really, the MAP amendment is about the reduction in parking spaces, if I'm understanding this correctly, from our role as KCPC. In terms of the MAP amendment?
There is a reduction of parking spaces, yes. But there's also an addition of the stacking lane as well.
Yeah, it's the development plan.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's the whole plan. But of course, the building is already there, all of those other things that were in the original concept development plan are already there.
Great.
No changes to those.
All right, any other questions?
I just have one.
Yeah.
If they, if we approved this tonight, and it went through and got approved by Fort Wright, and then they came in and they said, hey, we got this better idea, we're going to add this lane, would you, the staff, think that was a major change in this plan to come back before us?
Well, that determination isn't something that we determine, that would be determined by the city.
Okay, no, I don't think they would. I mean, I don't, I don't, my opinion is, you're going to make this safer. I mean, why argue about it? I mean, it's coming in two directions, it's still the same stacking. To be honest with you, this is the third one in this development that we've seen that I don't even know why we're looking at it. And it's not a staff review, because an addition to, a little addition to Walmart, isn't a big thing. And adding a drive-through lane, to me, isn't a big thing, it takes a lot of time at this commission, it can be a staff review. Just my opinion, thank you.
Okay, all right, any other questions or statements? All right, anyone else? All right, moving right along, all right, thank you. Okay, we'll recess the public hearing for discussion among commissioners. Yeah, Mr. Bethel?
My grandkids love Chick-fil-A.
Who doesn't?
They go down there. And it is a problem with everybody trying to merge in. I think this is an excellent idea to try to get people directed to the proper lane. And they do have a little bit of, once you keep opening up the two lanes, they move quickly. But it's trying to get to the two lanes, and I think this would not only increase the safety by people trying to go across lanes, it would also aid in the efficiency of what they're doing down there. So I think this is, I know we're coming in at the midnight hour, but still, I think it's an excellent idea. And sometimes you look at things and can't see the forest for the trees, and then you say, oh, this is working even better, so.
Yeah, I mean, I share the same thoughts. My only reservation was by reducing the option to go in that right lane if it isn't as busy, does that really not help the 17 traffic quite as well? But candidly, if they've got both the lanes in there and they see that it's not working quite as well, they'll just, you know, work with the city and change that piece of it, so. Yeah, Mr. Simpson?
For these, talking about the safety of this plan, I don't want to say yes or no to that. I am hesitant of approving this with this change only because of the timing that it came in. Yes, it's great for this business, but are there any repercussions or downsides to their neighbors? That needs to be looked at. Not that it's bad or good, I just think it needs to have a little bit more time to, that we think about it and see like what other effects that this has on the overall traffic pattern. Because it sounds like it's a great traffic pattern for Chick-fil-A, which, but what happens to the other individual, or the businesses that are next to Chick-fil-A, does that, what does that do? I would recommend that we, we look at the proposed plan without the changes and see, and then let it go through its due diligence with the changes.
Can I make a point?
Yeah.
As someone who goes down there occasionally, I think it would only help the neighbors. Because it gets backed up, traffic gets backed up into Burger King or something next door. Traffic gets backed up, if you can keep traffic moving quickly, relatively quickly through there, you won't have the backups that you have with the adjoining restaurants and so forth. And I think that would improve not only the traffic flow here, I think the whole area. There's a lot of restaurants and so forth, drive-throughs and so forth down there. I think it would improve efficiency for the whole area.
Yeah, if it was a change where they were getting, they were restricting the drive-through to add more parking spaces for dine-in, now all of a sudden, I'm more concerned about the impact on the neighbors. This is, I think, just going to improve it. We don't have anyone signed up from the neighbors, if they really had a concern, they would be here. And I don't think the change like Mr. Smith raised, I, you know, I don't think it's that material of a change that it's very problematic, and staff was comfortable with it. So I'm okay proceeding with the revised plan.
And I'd like to just quickly add, the five parking spaces that they're eliminating, I feel are probably never used, completely useless, because they're blocked by drive-through traffic. Or if they're not, I wouldn't park there, because it might be blocked by drive-through traffic when I want to leave, and I wouldn't get out, so.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, Mr. France?
Yeah, so I think, I would agree, the five parking spaces are the least of the concerns here. They just need to go away, try to help improve the access to the drive-through. My concern would be further stacking, you know, you could cut to 17, because now you're limiting the guests coming from 17 to one drive-through lane. And so if that one is backed up, I know there's no curve separating the two, but it would seem like more customers would come in from 17 than from the Burger King lot. But maybe people will figure that out and get in, so they enter the restaurant with Burger King lot.
Well, you only have one lot, we only have one lane now, so you got 100% going in.
Everybody's using one lane now.
And he's thinking, now you're going to have one lane, it's going to be serving like 60%, I believe, what the gentleman said. So you're really going to be, that's the whole idea.
Yeah, Mr. Darpel?
I do wonder, I think when we make the motion, though, you got to be, if we're, if we make a motion to approve this plan, it's not what's in front of us. I mean, I think maybe if we add the plan in our notes or added comments, in other words, you know, do you think the plan as submitted is a better plan, which I think everybody's looking at and saying, yeah. Whether or not this is a major change or not is not for us to decide, it probably is for the city. And so we have maybe no objection to saying, hey, we've seen that. If the city feels that's not a major change and wishes to adopt that, that would be part of our recommendation. So we're not, at that point, we're only considering what should be in front of us, or what our staff has even had the opportunity to consider. And then we leave it to the city. If they don't think it's a major change for this that's been presented tonight, that's up to them. And I agree with Commissioner Simpson on that. I think we need to make a motion on the plan that was submitted, that staff gave the analysis on, but then do an added note to the city, saying, hey, if you don't find that as a material change and want to adopt that, you know, we don't have an objection, whoever makes this motion. Just a thought.
Are we permitted to do that, Mr. Smith?
Just my thoughts is, it's coming before us because there was a material change, right? And then they're presenting it to us with, granted, kind of an 11th-hour revision, but it's.
No, I'm thinking, I know, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm saying that whether or not this newly submitted, what came at the 11th hour, is a material change from what was originally submitted.
And I guess what I'm kind of saying, it's something a little different. It's a material change that required it to come before us, so they've made another change. It's been presented, it's been reviewed by staff. So I believe we're able, if people are comfortable, to act on this tonight, because it's only before us because there's a material change, and they're just adding to it. And there's been proper notice that there was going to be a change in the development plan. And so that anybody that was interested, or any neighbors that were interested, you know, could come to see what the changes are. And it is being presented at a public hearing, so, I mean, I'm okay from a legal standpoint, if you want, if we wanted to act on the development plan that's been presented. Of course, you know, what you're suggesting is also an alternative too.
Anyone else?
I just want to say that when applications are extended like this, samples should be involved that we could, you know, have a sample.
A little levity thing, you know?
All right. Let's return to the public hearing, any clarifications needed? I'm sorry, Mr. Sketch? Yes, we did. So we've returned to public hearing, any clarifications needed? All right, we'll close the public hearing, we'll entertain a motion, or Fort Wright rep, Mr. Burling?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion regarding file number PC-25-0013-MA. CPH Consulting for, on behalf of CFA, Fort Wright LLC, I'd like to make the motion to approve the MAP amendment, the conceptual plan within the PUD zone, seeking to improve the drive-through stacking lanes and reducing the parking spaces from 65 to 62. Based on the fact that the presentation is consistent with the comprehensive plan, staff's favorable recommendation on the development plan as presented, and also noting that it improves circulation not only within the business, but also on the adjacent accessways to the business.
Just for clarification, is it, is it as presented tonight, or the original application?
As presented tonight.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Sketch. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Let's see, Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Darpel?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
No.
It is approved.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. All right, next matter is file number PC-25-0014-MA. The applicant is Corporex, per Greg Scheffer, on behalf of Key Property Development LLC. The location is an area of approximately 45.03 acres, located on the north side of Dulwick Drive, between Crescent Springs Road to the east and Turfway Road to the west, approximately one mile west of Crescent Springs Road in Erlanger. The request is a proposed MAP amendment to the Erlanger zoning ordinance from BTP Business Park Zone to R-MF Multifamily Residential Zone. The applicant proposes a multifamily development with 450 apartment units, 550 off-street parking spaces, and associated amenities.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
As do I.
Mr. Dunbo, if you'll proceed, please.
All right, and thank you very much, and again, for the record, I am Patrick Dunbo with PDS Staff. And as was stated, this is a proposed MAP amendment to the Erlanger zoning ordinance, changing the property from business park to multifamily. The site is located within the first-string suburban subarea of the Kenton County Comprehensive Plan and the suburban subarea. The site is currently vacant and has been graded for future development. It is heavily wooded in parts with steep slopes and streams surrounding the perimeter. One of the streams does extend into the interior of the site. It's located directly north of the Interstate Interchange. It contains two parcels, there's one large parcel and one very small parcel. The small parcel's on the southeast side, very hard to see in this image. A portion of the northern part of the parcel, of the larger parcel, does extend into the city of Crescent Springs. But the requested MAP amendment is only for the portions of the property that is within the city of Erlanger. The total MAP amendment area is approximately 45 acres. The surrounding area consists of a mix of uses, including business park-type office development adjacent to the site, as well as single-family residential to the north of the site, within Crescent Springs, and additional vacant land within the business park zone. This is an image looking northwest into the site along Dulwick Drive, at the edge of the frontage with that smaller parcel. Then this is an image looking northwest into the site along Dulwick, near the center of the site. And again, as you can see, the site has been graded. And then this is an image looking back the opposite way along Dulwick Drive towards Crescent Springs Road. In 2021, the city adopted a new zoning ordinance as part of the Z21 process. Under the previous ordinance, the site was zoned Business Park 1. This previous zone did permit multifamily residential, but only as part of a planned unit development overlay. Again, it was an overlay at the time. When the new Z21 zoning ordinance was adopted, the property was designated Business Park Zone. The Business Park Zone included multifamily residential as a permitted use, but without that PUD qualifier. Then in 2022, the city approved a text amendment that removed multifamily as a permitted use within the Business Park Zone. Essentially, since the new zoning ordinance allows planned unit developments anywhere and has a separate zone onto itself and no longer an overlay zone, and multifamily is still one of the uses permitted within a PUD, the act of removing multifamily as a permitted use out of the Business Park Zone brings, brought the zoning districts closer to how it was prior to Z21. The site is currently zoned Business Park. Surrounding zoning includes additional Business Park to the east and west, general industrial to the south. Then areas to the north, again, within Crescent Springs, are zoned single-family residential. The existing land use is open space and vacant. Surrounding land uses include additional open space and vacant land, as well as institutional and office uses. There are industrial uses to the south and single-family residential to the north. Dulwick is classified as a major collector road. There are currently no sidewalks existing along this road, and Tank does not currently operate a bus route along Dulwick. The Business Park Zone, which is the current zone, is intended for office, light fabrication, and research and development uses, with some limited retail. These zones are intended to be placed along transportation thoroughfares and be developed in a campus-like setting. This zone, again, does not permit residential uses. The residential multifamily zone is intended for higher-density uses and should be located where public services and transportation infrastructure can support higher density. This zone can be used as a transition area between lower-density residential and business districts. This is the submitted concept development plan showing the entire site, the plan. is the submitted concept development plan, showing the entire site. The plan does show 450 dwelling units spread over six buildings. With access off Dulwick Drive, there are approximately 550 total off-street parking spaces, and an area for community amenities to the north of the site there. This is a closer view of the development. So again, this is the access point from Dulwick Drive. The 450 units will be broken down into 122 studio, 224 one-bedroom, and 104 two-bedroom units. Each building will be four stories in height. The amenities include a clubhouse, and again, it's here on the north side of the property. There's a clubhouse, there's a swimming pool, there's tennis/pickleball courts, and there is a proposed hiking trail extending down into the development along this side here. Of the 550 total parking spaces, 502 is the required number, leaving 48 additional spaces. Each space will be 9 by 18, with 24-foot drive aisles. There's also a network of pedestrian walkways connecting the parking areas with the buildings and the hiking trail. Landscaping shown includes parking lot landscaping and landscaping around the buildings and the amenities, with existing vegetation around the perimeter of the site. There is also a detention basin indicated on the plan. The applicant has provided additional information regarding the proposed housing, stating that the development is intended to support the broader Business Park, which is known as the Circleport Development. Additionally, the unit sizes will range from 725 to 1,050 square feet, with rents ranging from $1,500 to $1,900 a month. When putting this to the housing need chart, this development does generally fall within one of the areas of need. You can see there in the red box. Staff conducted a review of the comprehensive plan and finds areas of consistency. The proposed development will provide new housing options in closer proximity to employment centers and could serve as supportive housing to the existing Business Park. The addition of housing in support of an existing employment center can help to draw talent into the region to support those businesses. The proposed development will also provide passive and active recreational opportunities for the residents, while preserving much of the site in its natural state. The development will provide an enhancement to support existing and future businesses by helping to eliminate a potential barrier for businesses, which is needed housing for the workforce. The proposed development will help to fill a gap for income-aligned rental housing. Staff also finds areas of relevance where there may be some insufficient information to determine compliance. The development is not indicating sidewalks currently along the frontage with Dulwick Drive, so additional information will be needed to determine compliance with that requirement. And then staff also finds areas where the development is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed development is removing available industrial and business park land in a strategic location where employment centers could locate on a large, ready-to-build site. Additionally, the proposed development will add density in an area that is not currently directly serviced by public transportation. The applicant should pursue discussions with the appropriate transit, transit agencies. The proposed development is not consistent with the recommended land use, which identifies the site for industrial development. The recommended land use MAP states that land best suited for industrial purposes will generally have good access to the interstate highway and rail systems, and good proximity, proximity to urban development and a full range of urban services. A majority, a majority of the perimeter of the site contains areas of DSA and blue line streams. A blue line stream is also located in the eastern portion of the site, extending into the interior. And a majority of the proposed development will not be located within these DSA areas. So again, KRS 100 states the requirements for MAP amendments. Staff is providing a favorable recommendation on the MAP amendment. The proposed amendment is generally in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Although the development will remove available land for industrial development, it will provide higher-density, income-aligned housing that will serve to support the broader employment area, potentially making the remaining Business Park more marketable for future employment centers. The concept development plan generally meets the zoning requirements except for the following. Some additional pedestrian connections will be required, as well as a sidewalk along Dulwick Drive. The ordinance does require every dwelling unit to have garage spaces. The city has submitted a text amendment to remove this requirement. Parking lot landscaping requires additional parking islands for every 10 contiguous spaces, and the character standards require that there be no parking between primary facades and public streets. I will note the applicant is aware of these issues and are currently pursuing amendments. If approved, additional information will be required with future permits, including use-specific standards, photometric plans, fences and walls, including around the swimming pool, hillside development standards where needed, and land disturbance permits. Additionally, a traffic impact study has been identified as a requirement that's been identified through our regulations as well as KYTC. So coordination will be needed with KYTC, the PDS engineer, and the city. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Dunbo?
Commissioner Simpson?
Sorry. Do you expect that there would be additional, like these additional permits that are required, the cost aligned with that? Is that gonna, do you think that will have an effect on the rents or of, of the property? So the additional items like the lighting, the sidewalks, and things like that?
Sure. Those are all requirements of the ordinance. So it would, it's something that's going to be required regardless.
Understood. Okay.
Does that, does that, Commissioner Burling?
Yeah. Yeah. Patrick, was, were you or staff concerned about no bus routes along this apartment complex, along Dulwick Avenue?
Yeah, it is a concern. We certainly noted that as part of the inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. You know, ultimately, we feel the, the benefits of income, income-aligned housing outweighs, you know, that as far as our recommendation goes. But, you know, certainly is a concern, and we do recommend that the applicant reach out to, to Tank as, as an agency to see what can be done.
See if they can get some adjustment. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Jane?
This might be for the applicant, but is there a reason there's no one-way in, one-way out? Is there a reason there's not a second?
I would defer that to the applicant. I, I'll just leave it at that, yeah.
Any other questions? There being none. Thank you, Mr. Dunbo.
Thank you.
I have registered to speak right now for, I have Greg Shepherd and Jack Gatlin, and then against, I have Bob Flaherty or Jeff Smith. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this? If not, Mr. Shepherd is the applicant. Would you like to address, address the commission?
I would briefly.
My name's Greg Shepherd. I'm with Corporex, the applicant here. I appreciate the opportunity to present this project to you. I think Patrick did a great job giving the overview of what we're proposing here. I just want to add to that a little bit there. Corporex, as many of you know, owns the Circleport project out there. It's a pro, project that's been in development for about three decades on both sides of 275. The original concept was a giant business park similar to Blue Ash. Since that time, since we started developing, development trends, trends have changed significantly with what end-users are looking for. We, every time we show, we show a property to a prospective end-user, we run into certain competitive disadvantages with other sites that we're competing against, you know, several in Ohio. But the biggest issue we have are the lack of housing in the immediate area and amenities. So we're working on retail amenities in the Circleport project. Most of those will be on the Boone County side, so we won't burden you with those. This site here, we, and we have done some additional residential on the Boone County side of Circleport as well. Here, with our, with our project, with our project on this side of 275 on the Kenton County side, we have several hundred more acres that are developable, that have been looked at, and that's the consistent thing we hear. And it's an issue you're seeing Boone County dealing with, with the development going on and in around the airport with Amazon and those associated businesses over there. But there's not, there's not enough housing in the general area. The ad district study, I think, just makes that abundantly clear as well. National news, we see the housing crisis. I mean, it, it, it's, it's a real issue, and we're hearing it from employers. So what we're trying to do here is not necessarily remove developable industrial land. We're trying to make the industrial land, the several hundred acres we still have, more attractive to, more attractive to prospective end-users. There's certainly demand for this product. We think this is a, a good location for it. It brings it right near where all the, all the employment, the employment hub that's in and around the airport, that's coming, that's continuing to grow towards the 75 intersection, and that already exists there. And, you know, we believe it can be a, a good project. I know there was, there was a question with regard to the access point, why there's one access point going in and out there. And that's really, that's really due to, due to the topography there now. If you've driven by and you see the existing site, the site does sit well above Dulwick Drive. It sits very high. It's just, it makes it, it's difficult to put that second access point there. So with our engineers, we look for the best, best place to put that access road. And, and we're going to continue to work. We're working with, actually, in the process of doing the traffic impact study now. So that, that will all factor into those issues as well with KYTC, PDS, and then with the city of Erlanger. So happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have other questions? Mr. Shepherd? Commissioner Simpson?
I just want to kind of give you the same question I, I gave earlier. I guess you don't see that the rents are going to increase with the additional items that you, that are required to make this viable, like the additional pedestrian connection, sidewalks, landscaping, and things like that? Is it your goal to keep the rents that you're proposing the same, even with these additional items that are needed?
We believe so. You know, these are intended to be market-rate apartments, and obviously, we, we need to keep that within that market range, else we're going to have trouble leasing them. So the intention is to keep those within, within the market range. Development costs, there's always unknown variables that, that you have to factor in, and you budget as best you can, and, and try to keep a project within budget. So we hope to keep, we hope to keep that, these rents within that, within that identified range that we, that we showed.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Commissioner Bridges?
This business park, and you've referred to industrial, is this basic, is this basically industrial land, or is it office or road?
It's, it's, I think the permitting use is there, and correct me if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, but I believe office uses, office showrooms, I think warehouse logistics. If, many, or industrial, I think it would be light industrial, no heavy industrial is permitted in this business park. But that's what we're looking at, probably the warehouse and logistics and light industrial, along with office uses.
And is this site-ready for, I mean, you said you had several hundred acres there for industrial. Is it site-ready?
It is, most of it is. We've, we've actually been working and investing into the, into the land to have it site-ready so that we can, we can execute quickly when we have various potential uses come, come in. We've, we've actually renovated the site so it's site-ready for the apartments. We've done the same. It's even more crucial when we're in competitive processes with, when economic development companies like B, or agencies like BNKY have, have uses come in, they are substantially site-ready.
And you say you're having trouble, you're at a competitive disadvantage with other sites, trying, trying to market the, as, as, as business park industrial?
Yes, just, just, you know, the nature of it. When, when companies are locating to the area or moving quality-of-life issues, being close, you know, they want the housing relatively close by for their employees, or at least available, not just, not just here, but I think it, it, it's benefit for the broader community in the area. But it is something that's raised frequently, this and, and retail uses, places to go get lunch and eat and that sort of thing. It, it's brought up every single time.
Well, I'm really confused, because we've had the fiscal court come give presentations and upset the whole southern end of the county, that we got to have more industrial, got to have more industrial. And you're here telling me you have site-ready industrial and want to convert it to something else.
I, I think what we're, what we're doing, I can't speak for the county, obviously, what we have here, we, we can't accommodate heavier industrial uses. We can only accommodate warehouse logistic, and logistic uses, and, and light fabrication and that sort of thing.
That's, that's what they want. That's the same thing. They're saying they're crying need for it, got to have hundreds of acres in, in the county, and you're, you're here telling us you want to, you have it and can't get rid of it and want to convert it to something else. So something, something's not hidden up for me. So, thank you.
Are there other, other questions? Mr. Shepherd? Did you get yours answered? Question? Okay. Thank you. We appreciate it. I know if we have some opponents or anything, if you'll be able, if you'll listen and please be able to answer, address any of their issues.
Absolutely.
I also had registered to speak for Mr. Gatlin.
Mr. Darple, members of the commission, I'm here on behalf of the city of Erlanger, the executive branch. Mark Collier is on vacation, city administrator in Erlanger, so I'm his stand-in tonight. And I just want to address a couple letters, or three letters that I think are already in your packet. I know these were-
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna read them and put them in.
If you're gonna read them, I will, I'm just-
I'm going to summarize them. They're quite lengthy. I'm not going to read them.
Thank you. But I'll at least-
I will get them in.
I will, I will do a briefer summary. So just, just by reference, the city of Erlanger, Mayor Jessica Fetti has a letter here where she is supporting both this MAP amendment and then a text amendment, which is later on the agenda, which deals with the detached garages. There is also a letter from the Northern Kentucky Ad District, which supports this project primarily because of the shortage of multifamily that's in the region, as well as a letter from the Northern Kentucky Chamber of Commerce. So just here on behalf of the city of Erlanger, Erlanger staff and the mayor support this MAP amendment. Is that brief enough, Mr. Darple?
That's brief. I appreciate it. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Gatlin? All right. That's all we have registered to speak for. I do have three letters. I'm gonna briefly get, because, bring them in, make them as part of the record, because we received them and were requested to. I do have a letter from the mayor, Mayor Jessica Fett, if, basically stating on behalf of the city of Erlanger and PEX, and the text amendment, they have strong support for the text amendment that we're going to be hearing, for it to remove the garage requirement. And eliminating the, and eliminating that unnecessary mandate, Erlanger will be expanding its housing options. And the amendment is appropriate and reasonable. And they agree with staff to, that it will help better accommodate the diverse lifestyle. The MAP amendment, which is what we're talking about to rezone the 45 acres, carries significant benefits to the city and region. 450 modern apartments with amenities, recreation, supports of workforce, and supports the workforce development goals. By creating this high-quality housing, they address key barriers cited by employers of, and lack of nearby housing choices of employees. Type of investment strengthens the economic and helping Erlanger attract businesses. Also important in there, integrating multifamily housing in selected Business Park development area, remain Erlanger VP zone sites, and it makes them more competitive. They want to continue to grow as a strong employment base. And they believe that it does meet the long-term goals of the comprehensive plan. And that was that letter. The next letter is from the Northern Kentucky Area Development District. Basically says that they are a county region, and they were entrusted with the administration of the housing data that issuing the Home For All Northern Kentucky Housing Strategy Report. The Home For All provides a menu of strategies outlining to assist the local government. They identify Northern Kentucky housing stock and its needs. They, Northern Kentucky needs a wide range of housing options to meet the lifestyle needs and budgets of our workforce. They call that income-aligned. From people just graduating from college to the C-suite, everyone needs safe, budget-appropriate places to call home. The proposed zone change will help address the- The proposed zone change will help address the growing demand for income-aligned. This particular unit is within, is expected to correspond with the number of strategies for the Home, Home For All report. The address for the, to address the shortage of rental housing, expand the housing choices and make more efficient use of existing roads, utilities, public structures. As the Northern Kentucky Area Development District is also recognizes the Economic Development District. And they continue to see this as a good, positive economic addition. Their strategic plan to implement strategies contains goals and performance metrics. They go through their goals to promote competitive regionally, collaborate and attract companies, implement multi-layer regional strategy, enhance regional infrastructure, address critical infrastructure needs, foster healthy, vibrant communities, sensible redevelopment and infill, and embrace all people and emphasize the importance of available, income-aligned and attainable housing. The analysis of the MAP amendment aligns well with the priority of CDS Plan and the Home For All Report. Encourage thoughtful consideration to the request. Please contact, and that's signed by Tara Johnson Noem. That'll be marked Exhibit Two. I'm sorry, the mayor's is marked Exhibit One for this file. Finally, there is a note from the Chamber, Northern Kentucky Chamber of Commerce. Dear Commissioners, they're writing on behalf of this text amendment. For the business community, connection between housing and economic development is clear. We have a shortage of attainable housing. And according to the housing study, we require 6,650 housing units by 2028. The MAP amendment, which would rezone this Dolwick Drive to allow for multifamily, direct response to the urgent need, its options are near one of our largest employment area, the Circle Port and the CVG, the airport area. This type of investment strengthens our ability to grow our workforce. Text amendments, which removes the garage requirements in the RMS zones, another important step forward. The Kentucky Chambers Housing Blueprint emphasizes the importance of adding a variety of housing. Both these amendments advance these priorities. For these reasons, expects, we respectfully urge the commission to support staff's favorable recommendation and approve the MAP amendments. It'll strengthen our regional housing, support our businesses, and help ensure Northern Kentucky remains a region where people and companies choose to grow. I'm marking that as Exhibit Three to this. Anyone have any questions, comments on those letters? Need me to do it? They're in your, I don't know if they're, I think they're in your packets as well. So, but those need to be marked and they'll now be put in the record. We are going to go to the public hearing, we have those speaking against, but because we're reading letters in, I do have one, I do have one for speaking against, so I'm gonna go ahead and put that in the record if y'all will indulge me. We'll mark this as Exhibit Four for this file. And it's, this is from Kristen Siegel. And the, basically reads, "To whom may concern is resident Crescent Springs, Kentucky. It is a terrible idea to allow corporate access to 450 apartment units. Traffic's already a nightmare coming off Dolwick, Kenton Lands, Anderson Road to Buttermilk to get on I-75 north or south. Road is not suited to hold additional traffic, causing major delays when Crescent Springs and Villa Hills residents trying to get home. Strongly urge the county to look at traffic patterns and not money. Please let me know if you have any questions." That's from Kristen Siegel. And I will mark that as Exhibit Four for this. That is the only one I think that I have against. I didn't miss any, did I? Staff, does it sound like I missed any? I think I got them all. We still have two people to vote, or to speak against. First, Mr. Flaherty, Bob Flaherty? If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name's Bob Flaherty. I live at 905 Crossings Drive in Crescent Springs, Kentucky. Now, I'm sure if you all had a dollar for every, every concern that someone made about traffic related to a development, you all would have a lot of money. I would have a lot of money if I got a dollar for every complaint that I see on our neighborhood website in Crescent Springs about traffic on Buttermilk Pike. As Mrs. Siegel said, it really is a nightmare on Buttermilk Pike. And I would encourage you, if you have not been on Buttermilk Pike, to get on Buttermilk Pike. And also go down from Dolwick down to Crescent Springs Pike to Anderson Road to get on Buttermilk Pike. It backs up Crescent Springs Pike and Anderson Road backs up in the early morning and in the evening with traffic backing up. So traffic is really a problem. And I have some questions. Has there been a comparison with the business park development with this proposed plan for over 400 apartments? A comparison of traffic? Is there a traffic study or has there been one regarding the industrial development?
Is that your, we can, we can go to all your questions, but this one there. A traffic study is, is, and our staff reports that traffic study will be required for this when it, as it moves forward in the phases.
But there has not been one done for the industrial development right now.
It hasn't been one yet comparing those two. And whether they're, whether that traffic study will compare those two, I, I can't tell you.
Okay. I would like to see that because I'm very happy that there is going to be a traffic impact. And will that include the traffic from Dolwick down Crescent Springs Pike and Anderson Road onto Buttermilk Pike?
I don't know the distance of that. I don't know, I can't, I'm not going to tell you that I know exactly what's going to be in a traffic study and how, how far they'll go out, but you know, generally they check, they check the traffic in the surrounding area as well as site-specific. So it's supposed to do traffic generation studies and, and all of that.
Do you know who will do the traffic study?
I do not know who will do the traffic study.
Well, that concerns me because traffic is a very serious issue for the people that live in Crescent Springs. Unfortunately, I don't see this room packed physically with residents. I wish it was. But as I said, I see an awful lot of complaints from the residents on the neighborhood side of Facebook. I'm not against affordable housing. I know that the NKADD has done a study and I'm for that. I also think that there is a conflict from what the fiscal court has said about industrial development, especially in Southern Kenton County. It's a big problem. The people down there don't want it. So you have a shortage of industrial development. So to not have industrial development and have apartments, it's somewhat of a, I don't know, it's some, somewhat perplexing. So again, my concern, as I'm sure you hear from everybody that's going to do a development from the people surrounding that area, that traffic is a concern. But I'm telling you, in our city, in Buttermilk Pike, in that Dolwick connector down Crescent Springs Pike through Anderson Road is a major problem. And you people have the power to do something about it. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Flaherty? Questions? Thank you, Mr. Flaherty, we do appreciate you coming. Mr. Jeff Smith?
Good evening, Commissioners. Excuse me, it's the second time I'm here in two months, I can't believe that. But anyhow, my name's Jeff Smith, I live in Crescent Springs, I'm at Harris Avenue. And I'm here as a resident and I'm also on council there as well. So I am kind of going to briefly speak regarding, let's see, when I ran for council, you know, of course I went out and did a lot of politicking and I had some people assist me with that. And my neighbor, my number one, I guess, complaint against all, from all those citizens was, you guessed it, traffic. And I would say we, we touched probably about 85% of the houses in Crescent Springs and that was the number one complaint. Patrick, I, I spoke with Patrick and I did do a video of the area in question that we've been talking about as far as traffic that runs from pretty much Buttermilk Pike all the way down Erlanger Crescent Springs Road up to Dolwick, which is where the development is. And Patrick, if you could assist me with that. So anyhow, before I do start the video, it's about 50 seconds long.
Do we have, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but just so I make the record correct, do you have that saved as a video drive?
Yeah, it's in our evidence folder for this, for this case.
If you'll somehow entitle that as Exhibit Five under this, under this issue?
And just briefly.
Just down the road, however we do that within the computer. I just want to make sure we keep it for record.
And just briefly, where this video is starting is, if you're all familiar with Irene's Little Bar, it's actually right at the stop sign of Western Reserve and Erlanger Crescent Springs Road. So you can see right there to the left, is I believe just prior to Irene's Little Bar. So now I took this video on, 4:30 on, actually 4:37 on a Tuesday. And I'm going towards Dolwick from Crescent Springs. And you can just see the amount of traffic I'm encountering. Lo and behold, you don't want to get in that turn lane there. Sorry, Jones on the left side there. And you got your signature hardware on the right. And we're just about to come up to the stoplight there on Dolwick, where they would be coming off of that turning left. So you can see the amount of traffic and then, you know, if you're going to add roughly 900 more cars, not that they're all going to come that way, but I would say half of them are going to come that way. Now, I did do my own little traffic study and I'm going to be very brief, but if you were to come out of that development and turn left onto Dolwick and come back through Crescent Springs to hit I-75 northbound, which I would assume most of those cars would probably be rolling that route, that's about a 2.2 mile venture. Now, for them to go towards, let me get my bearing here, towards Mineola and/or Dolwick to make that same route and come back down 75 or come down Dolwick, I'm sorry, come down 275 or come down Dolwick to get onto 75 to go north, those two routes would be 5.8 miles and 6 miles. So the shorter route is, of course, going through Crescent Springs, the 2.2 miles. So like I said, all these cars are going to be coming through our neck of the woods and, you know, it's, it's already unsustainable. I mean, you can see that, that's, all those vehicles are coming to a stop sign. And then they're going to go up and go to a traffic light and turn right onto Buttermilk Pike. So I don't know if any of you all live in the area, but here in the last two years, the traffic coming off of Interstate 75 onto Crescent Springs, Buttermilk Pike, in both directions, the traffic is now starting to back up actually onto the interstate, which to me is very dangerous. Sooner or later, there's going to be a major collision and it's not going to be pretty. So that's, that's my main concern is traffic, of course, and it's just really gotten bad there. And like I said, that's the ma- major complaint. And then also in reading, you know, the PDS's mission goal, it says, URO's mission goal, it says, "We enhance the quality of life through safety and protection of our community." That's just part of it. But with that saying, this is going to create a problem and it's going to create, the quality of life is going to go downhill for, for the residents of our community. And, you know, we just would ask that you really take consideration into this traffic study. If you're not familiar with it, take a ride out there about 4:30, 5 o'clock. Some of the people, you know, I've coined, you know, you have rush hour, we coined it rush hour and a half, because that's how long it takes you to get anywhere anymore. So I would just ask that you deny these, this development? And just for the fact that it is in a, a business park and they want to put multifamily in there, that just, just don't sound right. I agree with Mr. Bridges, it's just, something's not right. So with that being said, I won't entertain any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Simpson?
I'm, I was raised in Covington, so I'm not really familiar with, with this part. So like, are you, have you been in this area for a while?
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine years.
So when you moved, so about 35 years ago, was the traffic like this? Like was it, was the, was the road this size? Was it multiple lanes?
No, the actual thoroughfare that we just showed there, it's the same. There's been no changes there that I'm aware of. I don't recall any changes there.
It's been that, it's been that number of lanes for 30-some-odd years?
Correct. And then also the main intersection where these cars will be coming up to Buttermilk, when I moved there, was a four-way stop sign. And then you could get straight to Buttermilk Pike. Now there's four light systems in there. It takes you probably five minutes to get up there, just depending on the traffic situation. But yeah, it's really the, other than Buttermilk Pike, the thoroughfares have not changed.
Okay. And also, what, is the traffic like this outside of like 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock?
Generally it's about 4 o'clock, and this is light. I did it at 4:30, so if you get in there about 5 o'clock, it's, it's stacked. I mean, those cars aren't moving, they're stacked.
So my question is outside of that time?
Outside of that timeframe, no. I mean, it's, prior to that, it's nowhere near as bad as that, but anywhere from, I'd say, 4 o'clock to 5:30, it's a mess.
So the traffic concern comes between 4 and 5:30, is that what you're saying?
Roughly, yeah, correct.
And no other time outside of that throughout the?
I mean, rush hour, of course, during the morning as well.
Okay.
Rush hour and a half during the morning, correct.
And on the weekends, the same?
Uh, no, no.
Okay, so we're talking about 4 to 5:30, Monday through Friday, and rush hour, that's our, that's the, that's your traffic concern?
Correct. It's rush hour and a half now.
That's what I need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Bridges?
I'll just observe what we usually observe is it's a zoned business park. They can put warehouses, tractor trailers, light manufacturing, hire 200 or 300 people and have just as much traffic. I mean, if we turn this down and they make it industrial and tractor trailers, et cetera, and it'd be just as bad. I mean, yes, this will be more traffic than vacant land, but you know, they're going to do something with it and it's going to be about the same if they put a factory in there.
Well, and that's possible, but it's just, you know, this planning commission, I, I hold the finger at you all because you all allow all the development that's created the traffic. You just need to really take a look at the traffic studies before they allow all this development in our area and it's just not being done. And I hold you all responsible for the trafficking.
Well, the, the traffic study will dictate if they can proceed with this. And it'll give alternative solutions potentially, so that we do take delight that there is a traffic study. It does come to a conclusion and they can't proceed if it's a negative conclusion. So if, if the traffic study, and generally, I think staff might be able to tell you who does traffic study or the developer can tell who they've selected to do the traffic study. But they're generally pretty thorough on peak hours and, and the flow of traffic and stuff. And I, I agree with you from the, the busyness aspect during traffic time. I dropped off something at St. Vincent de Paul there one day and it, you know, took me 15 minutes to get by a nice driver to let me out. But it is, it is a traffic nightmare, but I, I'm kind of amazed with all the people working from home where all the traffic comes from.
Right, I agree.
It's, it's gotten worse. We've got a new bridge coming in and I, I don't see any resolution to, to traffic. I think the county and the state's got to get involved with some of these roads and I think there's some solutions there. But again, the traffic study will dictate some of this and if, and if it can't be done, it won't be allowed to be done. And I agree with Mr. Commissioner Bridges, if they put in a logistics place, you have semis pulling in and out of there. I, I'd rather see cars than semis, but, and, and having some continuing education in this area, in the industrial areas, you're trying to get people to come and work there so it's more of a thing of the past that they're trying to make for the future, to have people work locally and live locally. It makes for, I wouldn't want to live in Northern Kentucky and have to get to that It makes for, I wouldn't want to live in northern Kentucky and have to get to that site and, and go through that every day. So I think the local aspect of housing with the housing shortage is probably, there is a housing shortage, it's a good thing, and I, I get the traffic aspect of it too. So hopefully, the traffic study will say something that, yea or nay, and, and hopefully, I don't know if we have to start petitioning the counties and, and the state to improve some of these things. It's...
Well, one of the things, and we do have to wait and see what the traffic study says, but one of the reasons that they're asking for this is to get the housing for the development out there where it is, not to have housing like for the folks going into Cincinnati, or for the folks somewhere, I don't see this being the housing that they're going to go to. The idea is, we need housing to make our airport better, we need housing to have our businesses out there, we can't, I do know that there's businesses out there, they've had clients out there trying to find, and they can't find people and housing. So I, I'm hoping, and that, you know, this would be something where the housing would be going the other way, towards the airport and going towards, you know, those, that development.
We can't never determine that, of course, but...
But that's why you got to have the, the traffic. Do agree with you, you know.
But you know, I keep hearing this continually over and over in North Kentucky Ad District, stating that there is a shorting of housing, but I'm telling you, there is not a shorting of, shortage of traffic. And I tell you, Crescent Springs, Villa Hills, I think they've been totally built out. I don't know that there's any spots other than that place that we were talking about last month, right up the street from me, but I just don't see that there's a shorting of housing. It's just, they're everywhere, apartments, specifically Crescent Springs. I mean, that's, I would say probably half of that community's apartments. I just don't understand it. Villa Hills, like I said, land locked out, no more building sites there, not that I'm aware of. Crescent Springs, the same. You said you'd look, you'd go anywhere during these rush hour and a half times, and, you know, it's just gridlocked everywhere. Edgewood, Erlanger, Crescent Springs, Fort Mitchell, Fort Wright. Look at the interstate. I mean, I was coming here this afternoon at seven, seven-fifteen, and traffic on Buttermil- or I'm sorry, on Interstate Seventy-five through Fort Mitchell all the way down here, still locked up, so I don't know what to say, but...
Commissioner Vaughn?
Build that bridge, I agree, right.
Commissioner Vaughn, did you have a?
I do have a question. The video that you, I'm not familiar with the edges of your city.
Sure.
I drive there, I'm familiar with, but I don't know which parts which. How much of the video that you played is in Crescent Springs versus the other portion that would be Erlanger or another city?
Okay, as we go up the hill there, I mean, I don't want to play it again, but as you go up the hill, right?
Is it near Signature Hardware that it's reaching?
Yes, that's about where it is. It's come back this way about another, I don't know, a few hundred?
Smidge.
Yeah, smidge, and that's where Erlanger starts, correct. Yeah.
Commissioner Root, Erlanger?
Mr. Smith, as I looked at the video, what, what struck me is, I would think at four-thirty that the folks who are living in this proposed development are going home, the way you went. I didn't really see any stop traffic along the way that you were driving. It was actually going north as opposed to south, and so I'm just curious about your experience as a resident. What, what would, how would the apartments that people would generally be going home at four-thirty at night as opposed to going to work, how does it work in the morning in the other direction when those folks would be going to work, coming the way that we see the traffic? I didn't see you stop at all along that path.
Correct. Well, that's really not the issue going there, it's coming out, going through Crescent Springs.
But this is four-thirty, so presumably, the four-hundred-and-fifty units, those folks are going home at night.
Right.
And I'm just trying to understand, in the morning at seven-thirty, when they're going to work, presumably coming in the direction where the traffic is now, is it equally bad at seven-thirty in that direction?
Well, not, not really. I mean, it will be when that development comes, but I would assume that it will be that bad, you know, in the evening when they're going, going home.
Well, going home, I would assume they're going the same way you went, and you didn't stop once. So I'm just curious about the, how that development might impact Anderson Road and, and those areas, when it looks like you've flew, your traffic flowed pretty, pretty cleanly without any stops.
Right.
So just curious about how that might impact in the morning, folks who would normally go north to work as opposed to south.
Yeah, I, I really wouldn't know until the development's there, of course.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for making the video, that was very helpful.
I appreciate that. Thank you all for my, for your time, and appreciate you listening to me.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. We appreciate you being here. I will let the applicant, if you want to come up, and if you want to address any of the issues that you're, especially the opponents have, have brought up this evening?
I would, I would. I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to respond. I understand that we all know traffic is an issue, every development, every community, and I, and I understand Crescent Springs has been dealing with, you have Buttermilk issues for a long time, and issues here. Just one, one point I wanted, I know it was brought up earlier, or was brought up several times here, mentioned, this is currently zoned BP. Corporex bought this property back in the eighties. We've held it since the eighties. There's been a lot of road improvements that have occurred since then. More are obviously needed to help alleviate traffic, it's just a ongoing problem, but what, what this land is entitled to at this time is, I believe the floor area ratio that we're permitted here is two to one. We have forty-six acres, we have almost two million square feet of land here. So what's entitled to be here, to never be built, is a heck of a lot more than we could do here. You know, if there was a half million square feet, which I believe is well, this site could, could easily obtain that, if that were office need to, that standard calculation of four employees per thousand, you're talking two thousand employees, that would be added versus nine-hundred units. The units here, I believe, were, were a mile from, this site is a mile from Crescent Springs Pike, so there is a good, a good distance before you, before you hit Crescent Springs Pike. I think it's a good point that if these, if these residents are going north, if they're going to Cincinnati, if they're going to Covington, they'll be driving that way in the morning, they'll be driving that. I drive that myself in the morning. Afternoon, yes, it's, there are issues there. In the morning, it flows pretty cleanly. So you're going against, the traffic's going in the opposite direction if that is where, where in fact they're going. You also have that outlet on Mineola Pike, which is, I believe, one-point-eight miles before you hit Mineola Pike right there. So it's a little bit further, but it's also, you're not going to hit that traffic. I think the traffic study will show, I can't say for certain, but traffic, if given those alternatives with a backup, they'll start finding the path of least resistance if they're moving to get there. So you do have two release valves with this site, so I think, I think the traffic study will, will acknowledge that, and we'll see how, with their models, how, how that'll show up. We are, the traffic, person doing the traffic study is a gentleman, Mark Bergman, who's, Mark Bergman?
He doesn't work for Corporex, does he?
No, no, he does not. He's been, I believe he's done many, many studies before, he's very, very well-known in the industry and the community. Thank you for, for Dantus now, I think his old firm was just acquired. So he'll, he'll be doing that, he's working with KYTC to set up the scoping of the traffic study, and exactly where, where they're going to study in conjunction with the Transportation Cabinet. PDS, I believe, will be involved in that as well. So, you know, we, we are sensitive to that and need to address it. If the traffic doesn't work, it impacts our development as well, so we're sensitive to it, we want to make sure the traffic works also. I believe, I believe that's it. If there's any more questions or something I failed to address, I'm happy to do that as well, but...
No, you had, you addressed the questions that I had down here that people would ask. Is there, does any of the commissioners, anybody have any further questions? So you alluded to the fact that you're, in marketing the site, you're finding that the employers are requesting housing and living places for their future employees, and as a driving concern in that, in making it difficult for the site to remain business park. Are there any studies that would indicate how, if this four-hundred-and-fifty apartment goes through, what percentage of those might stay and work in, within that circle port, airport area, or, you know, or like I say, they're going to travel to south, they're traveling north to Covington, Cincinnati, Sharonville, Blue Ash to work?
I, I don't have a study that specifically states that, and really what I'm, what I think the point there is, is that every, when, when people are coming there, it's an issue that I think working, you know, if you work in the real estate business, you're dealing with these companies, and, and I think the people at the airport will tell you as well, there's, there's not enough housing, attainable housing, or I believe income-aligned was what the Ad District used. And it's, I mean, it's a problem, that's a, that's a problem and an issue in every community I've ever worked in, and it certainly is here. They, when they come, they see, they come and they look at sites, whether it's our site, whether it's up the road, whether it's up near Petersburg Road, wherever it is, they're looking, where's my workforce? Where are my employees coming from? If we, if we build this here, am I going to be able, is there going to be a talent pool that I can draw from? Where are they going to live? Are they going to be, are they going to have to drive twenty-five miles to get here? And those sorts of issues, because if they have them in close proximity, obviously, that more likely they're going to be able to retain those employees longer term. So it's a huge concern that we, we've experienced, and I believe every, every, everyone in and around the airport has, has brought it up as an issue as well.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Bridges?
How many acres of BP zone property do you have in Kenton County vacant?
Uh, we...
Roughly?
Yeah, on the Boone County side, we have additional over there, but they, they have, they don't, they call it something else. BP here, believe we, in addition to this, I think we have another one-hundred-and-fifty acres up toward, it's closer up towards...
Two-hundred all to get for this?
I, I believe, I believe it's about two-hundred, two-hundred plus or minus, that little wiggle room there. I, I don't, I don't mark it and lease it myself, I work with them in conjunction, so I, I don't know that number.
Anything zoned industrial in Kenton County? Or is it all this BP?
It's all BP.
All BP, two-hundred acres. How many acres?
I believe, I believe two-hundred, yes.
How many equivalent acres in Boone vacant?
Oh, our Boone, our Boones chopped up a little more. It's more built out. We have a couple tracks, I think we have a twenty-acre track, a four, you know, a couple four-acre tracks, and then we have some down near the Coca-Cola plant and on Olympic Boulevard at the end there, that's probably another twenty, twenty acres, but those aren't, those are smaller, smaller lots, you know, eight to ten acre, ten acre lots.
So fifty or less?
Probably, I think our largest tract on that side is just under twenty acres, but yeah, probably, probably fifty, fifty-ish on the Boone County side.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Shepherd? Thank you, Ms. Shepherd, appreciate you being here.
All right, thank you.
All right, with that, do we have any questions, the staff? Does, Erlanger, I'm sorry?
I do have staff.
Commissioner Bridges?
So you recommended approval of this. So previously, a few months ago, we had Mr. Weiss, now head of PDS, and Judge Knuckelman stand before us and tell us how Kenton County really needs thousands of acres of industrial ground in, on the west part, north of sixteen, and then the southwest corner, and that, and the plan is calling for that in the land use plan. So how is that, so how is taking site-ready and light industrial land and turning it into something else consistent with the plan? If we need this industrial land so bad, and we have to go upset a bunch of people and overturn their lives that we need this, why on earth are we taking site-ready industrial, light industrial ground and doing something else with it? How is that consistent with what we've heard from Mr. Weiss and Judge Knuckel? How is that consistent? It seems inconsistent to me.
So all I would say on that is that for this particular application, we did note areas of consistency and inconsistency. In the end, we feel that the addition of the income-aligned housing that can help support future business park growth within the vicinity outweighed and made it into the consistent category.
So housing trumps industrial?
Housing was a big part of our updated comprehensive plan. There is a housing shortage. This not only helps to meet the housing shortage, but is supportive to future industrial development and business park development.
Because where there went to do the industrial is, is residential, so that's housing that they'd be taking away and turning into industrial. I don't see how that's, how these two positions are consistent. We either need industrial or we don't.
Well, I think you're, Mr. Bridge, I'm, I don't know, I think you got to look at some of it, because you're saying industrial, and one, there's one thing for manufacturing-type industrial, another for business park.
Yeah.
And, and this is around a developed business park that they're trying to get more, and we're saying, hey, we still need the housing around it. Down there, the housing is there, so if you want to get the, the industrial, I'm not saying I agree or disagree with it, but you're not necessarily comparing apples to apples, the housing that they're putting in here.
Light, light industrial is what they want to do out south.
They want to try to get a lot of manufacturing jobs. They want to get jobs in Kenton County.
Light industrial, which they said...
Well, they're talking about more, and I don't want to get in, I'm not going to get into that part. To, to me, when they're saying, hey, we've got an area down here that's been developed as a business park, it has businesses in it, and what they need is almost a push to help keep this business area growing, they need some residential. You need to mix some residential by the industrial, you got to have your workforce within, within a driving area.
I don't see driving people out of their homes.
I think it's, I don't know that you're driving anyone out of their homes. That's, that's not what, that's not what's happening here. That's not what we have before us.
I know, we're not doing it here. I disagree with the need for housing.
Yeah. Just, just to comment on this too, the business park zone is for location of high-quality office, office showrooms, light fabrication, and research and development. So that's far different than, than a total industrial use.
But it includes industrial, and they can't sell it.
Well, it's light fabrication if you, if you're talking industrial, that's the only...
He called it light industrial.
Yeah, but the BP zone restricts it to these, these applications that I just read, so it's, it's pretty different.
I want to keep this focused on what, what's in front of us.
I'm just trying to see if we're consistent with the plan.
Just, just to add to that, to maybe kind of talk to how consistent it is with the plan, there's, there's less plate spaces to develop income-aligned housing and multifamily housing in Kenton County. There's more spaces to do this type of industrial, light industrial. So when you have, so, so both of them are important, I feel, but when you, I wouldn't say that income-aligned housing trumps anything else. It is something that came up a lot in our, in our implementation for the comp plan. Housing came up more than the need for industrial, not to say that we still don't need it, but with developing, you can develop industrial spaces more readily in all of Kenton County than you can with income-aligned housing. So we see two priorities. We have one that's harder to develop than another, and we have a space and a developer that wants to develop income-aligned housing. I think that's what helped push, helped make this favorable by the staff.
Okay. Anything else needed the staff? Do you know, Erlanger, does Erlanger have a twenty-one day rule?
They do not.
Okay. All right.
I have, I have to get some clarification here, maybe it'll help all of us. The zoning history here, can you say that again very quickly?
Sure.
And clearly about multifamily being allowed and just...
Sure. So in the previous zoning ordinance, the business park one zone, which was what this property was zoned at the time, did allow multifamily development within that zone, but only as part of a planned unit development. At that time, a planned unit development was an overlay zone, so it was overlaid on top of the underlying zoning. When Z-21 happened, you know, much of what staff tries to do, and when we work with the cities, is taking what the permitted uses were in the, in that current version and transferring that to the new. When it was transferred over, multifamily was allowed as a permitted use based on it being a use that was listed in the previous zone, but it was, again, without that PUD qualifier. So the city then came through and did a text amendment to remove multifamily as a permitted use from the business park, because now with Z-21, a planned unit development is no longer an overlay, it's its own zoning district, and, and the size requirement for a PUD had been decreased. So the idea being a planned unit... the size requirement for a PUD had been decreased. So the idea being a planned unit development is still available, you know, to a site like this, for instance, which can include a multitude of uses, one of which being multifamily. So the act of removing that out of the permitted use table essentially brought the Z-21 ordinance to what it was before Z-21, where multifamily was allowed, but only as part of planned unit development. Does that help?
Yes, but the question that comes to my mind then, why is the zoning change necessary?
It's necessary to do multifamily development. Now, could they come through and ask for a planned unit development and do that type of map amendment? That's, you know, a possibility, but they're seeking the multifamily zone because that is the use that they are proposing at this point, rather than any kind of mix of uses, and they're not looking for that flexibility that a PUD would provide.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dumbo. If there's no other, I believe we've gotten all our public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and recess the public hearings. There are discussion amongst commissioners?
Real, real quick, District Six has the 75-275 interchange study, and it specifically has this road and everything on it, and they know it's a problem child with the traffic that has been discussed. Unfortunately, I think last year, year before, they only did a Boone County section of that study, and I think when you pull up the website, there's a big balloon that shows up that says the next opportunity is 2026 in Franklin to get the funding needed. So I just think on the record, we should say it's being looked at. KYTC has acknowledged it. District Six has done a huge study on it. They know it's a problem, along with that interchange is a cluster anyway. And I think it's two or three times the traffic right now that it was, it was designed for. So it is, it is a known problem in the exits, lack of exits, lack of on-ramps, lack of ramp size, all that's in that study. So it is, it is being looked at against our best, thank you, it's Franklin. So I just want to make sure it's on the record.
Any other, Commissioner Simpson?
Just a couple of comments. I am glad that an income-aligned residential development project is being brought to us for, for consideration. The concerns, major concerns that I have are the items that may potentially raise those rents. Those are the sidewalks that probably need to be implemented, and also the garages, which I think is a non-starter with the letter from the city. I'm looking at the city, maybe not.
Yeah, there's a text amendment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can't, I'm not allowed to, not allowed to have you speak right now. We're, we're in discussion.
So the other, the other major concern I have is the, the single entry to this development. I think, I think that we might need to look at that, that there needs to be a second way out, whether you have to build something, but it's, that's, that's my major concern that there's one way in and one way out of this development.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'm going to go ahead. I will reconvene the public hearing. Anybody need any further clarifications from staff? And I guess, Commissioner Simpson, yeah, that we have a text amendment that's coming up here shortly, where they're asking for that, to remove the, the garages. So it may or may not go through, but we're only that recommending, we're only the recommending body to the city that is the one proposing it to us. No, I appreciate that. So, yeah. All right. Any other questions, comments? If not, I would like to entertain a motion on this. Our Erlang representative is not here this evening. We usually typically defer to. Why would like to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Simpson?
I wasn't prepared for it, but I'll make it.
I will make a motion to favorably move forward this, this amendment per staff recommendation and the testimony set forth.
And that's for PC 250014-MA?
That is correct.
And whenever we do a map amendment, we need to state that it's either within the compliance, within compliance with the comprehensive plan, or if we find the others inappropriate, there's been a change of economic condition or the other, other things. Is there something you want, you need to state that specifically?
So I'd like to push this forward due to the staff recommendation and the favorable, how it aligns with the comprehensive plan.
It's consistent with-
Consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
I have a second.
Commissioner Francis, second. Is there any question on the motion? Everyone get it? Okay, well, all right. Just wanted to make sure you're good. Okay, with that, if you'll call the roll, Mr. Smith. Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Based on staff's recommendation that industrial is not as important and is consistent with the plan, not to, not to have it and to change it to something else, I'm voting yes.
What, your vote was yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Dorple? Yes. Commissioner DeAngelis?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We are just, for those, especially those who came tonight, we do appreciate you coming. We are a recommending body on us, okay? So we make the recommendation to the city. The city, the city has the final say. The city will take our recommendation and act upon it. They, when I asked if there are 21-day rule, some cities allow that if you don't appeal it, it automatically goes through. Erlang is not that way, so they will take it up at their city council. So please keep in touch with the city, and they'll keep you informed as to what's going on.
Quick question regarding the traffic study. So this is passed, but outside of the traffic study, correct?
This is, all we are recommending, tonight, all that happened is we have a favorable recommendation, and it does state that a traffic study needs to be done, and that, that goes to the city, and the city will take it from there.
Yeah, so they'll have to have that study-
Yes. They'll have to have that study, the city, that should be provided to the city, yeah.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay. Mr. Flaherty, thank you. With that, we got to, I guess, Commissioner Dunn will take it back. All right.
You guys see your frame or can we-
Let's get it done. Sketch left.
All right. Next item up is PC 25-0049-TX. The applicant is the City of Covington, Perkage Ryan, Regulatory Services and Historic Preservation Manager. The request is to oppose text amendments to Covington Neighborhood Development Code to remove sober living facility and sober living home as uses, remove definitions and standards for sober living facility and sober living home, add recovery residences as permitted uses, and TUR, and TUMU, RR, SR, SU, DTC, and AUC zones, add a definition for recovery residence, amend the maximum gross floor area requirement for micro manufacturing in the mixed-use districts, and clarifying the zoning permit exemptions. Ms. Bessie?
Yes, thank you. For the record, my name is Megan Bessie, and I am with PDS staff. As stated, the applicant is the City of Covington, and the request is for text amendments regarding sober living homes and facilities, recovery residences, micro manufacturing, and zoning permit exemptions. So in 2020, the City of Covington submitted an application to adopt the new zoning ordinance, which we know of as the Neighborhood Development Code, including new text and new official zoning map. KCPC provided a favorable recommendation, and the city adopted the subsequent ordinance. The goals are as listed on the screen. In 2021, PDS disseminated a memorandum to provide a summary of the current law relating to zoning regulation of sober living homes, group homes, and residential care facilities, and to discuss some approaches that may be employed relating to them. This was an assessment of the current state of the law as determined by PDS council, but may not reflect the position of any stakeholders' legal counsel. Detailed information was supplied with this memo to allow independent assessment by individual jurisdictions. Federal law protects sober living homes from most zoning regulations by virtue of the Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. On March 24th, 2023, House Bill 248 was signed into effect, which requires certification for recovery residences and establishes regulations for such uses to include but not limited to new definition of terms, requires certification for recovery residences, and establishes requirements for the Cabinet for Health and Family Services pertaining to certified recovery residences. The first part of the submitted request is to remove sober living facility and sober living homes as uses. Under the current regulations, sober living homes, which is six or fewer residents, are permitted in rural residential, suburban residential, semi-urban residential, downtown core, traditional urban mixed use, and traditional urban residential zones under the residential household living use category. Living, sorry, sober living facilities, which are seven or more residents, are conditionally permitted in auto urban, commercial, suburban office, downtown core, and downtown riverfront zones under the public and institutional social services use category. The proposed text amendment will remove these uses from all areas within the Covington Neighborhood Development Code. The second part of the submitted request is to remove definitions and standards for sober living facility and sober living home. I have listed only the first sentence of each of the current definitions, but you can find the definition in full in your packets. So a sober living home is a use within a single-family dwelling where no more than six unrelated individuals recovering from a drug and/or alcohol addiction reside either voluntarily or by court order. Sober living facility is a dwelling where seven or more unrelated individuals recovering from a drug and/or alcohol addiction reside either voluntarily or by court order. So this proposed text will remove all definitions from the code. Under the current regulations, it states that a new bar or tavern may not be established within 500 feet of a pre-existing sober living home or sober living facility. The proposed text amendment will remove these regulations from all areas within the Covington Neighborhood Development Code. The third part of the submitted request will add recovery residence as permitted uses in traditional urban residential, tradition urban mixed use, rural residential, suburban residential, semi-urban residential, downtown core, and auto urban commercial zones. This use is not within the current uses as it stands today. The fourth part of the submitted request will add a definition for recovery residence. The purpose of the definition is to provide clarity to the terms and concepts within the zoning ordinance and to provide consistency in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The definition is the current definition found in KRS 222 for recovery residence and reads as it states on the slide here. I'll just briefly kind of outline these. It holds itself out as a recovery residence, recovery home, or sober living residence, alcohol, illicit drug, and/or other intoxicating substance-free home for unrelated individuals, provides a housing arrangement for a group of unrelated individuals who are recovering from substance use disorders, or to a group of parents who are recovering from. And it does not include any premises, premises placed or building that is licensed or otherwise approved by the cabinet or any other agency of the state government to operate as a residential or inpatient substance use treatment facility. The fifth part of the submitted request will amend the maximum gross floor area requirement for micro manufacturing in the mixed-use districts. Under the current regulations, it states that the maximum gross floor area of a micro manufacturing facility in the mixed-use districts shall not exceed 2,000 square feet. This is proposed to be removed. The regulation actually conflicts with another part of the regulation in that same section, which states that the gross floor area in the mixed-use district shall not exceed 5,000 square feet. So the 5,000 square feet requirement will still remain. It's just taking out the 2,000 square foot conflict. The sixth part of the submitted request will clarify the zoning permit exemptions. Under current regulations, it states the exemptions for zoning permits. The proposed text amendment will add an exemption clause to clarify the exemptions from a zoning permit, which states exemption from zoning permit requirements of this code shall not be deemed to grant authorization for any work to be done in any manner in violation of the provisions of this code or any other laws or ordinances. KRS 100 states the allowable content of zoning regulations which cities and counties may enact. Staff is providing a favorable recommendation for the proposed text amendment. The proposed text amendments are appropriate and reasonable. The proposed amendments add clarification, they refine regulations, and provide for consistency in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The proposed text amendments regarding recovery residence align with House Bill 248 as well as KRS 222. The proposed text amendments regarding the removal of sober living home and sober living facility brings the code more into compliance with the PDS memorandum. The proposed text amendment regarding micro manufacturing simply removes a conflict in the code. The proposed text amendment regarding zoning permit exemptions provides more clarity on the exemptions. Just some additional information, the city may wish to reference KRS 222 within the definition of recovery residence, and the definition of recovery residence should end in a period instead of a semipullin. Also, per KCPC's legal counsel, Covington's new proposed regulations improve compliance with federal and state law, but there could still be additional areas to consider. For instance, the suburban office, downtown riverfront, commercial mixed use, and central riverfront mixed use zones permit residential dwellings, but not a recovery residence. Even though these zones are mixed use, commercial zones predominantly, since they permit residential dwellings but not recovery residences, a violation of the Fair Housing Act and ADA is implicated. While not related to this request, there are many districts in Covington where a residence is permitted, but social services, that use, are not permitted or are a conditional use. So social services includes a group home for physically disabled, mentally disabled, or emotionally disturbed, seven or more residences, residents. This appears to conflict with the federal and state law of KRS 100, because these group homes cannot be subject to requirements that do not allow, or that do not apply to other residents in the district. So staff recommends that the city consult with their legal counsel to determine if further updates are necessary. For the exemption addition, it may be more clear to move the proposed additional language to the end of the introduction paragraph, so it reads as follows. Again, there's no changes to the actual text that they're proposing, it's just where it stands. And that's all I have for you. Any questions? I'd be happy to take them.
Questions from Ms. Bessie. Ms. Bur.
Megan, do the proximity limitations to bars still apply in this new, the new verbiage? Wasn't that something you read in the, in the definitions of the previous?
They're taking out the standards. Now, as far as recovery residences, they have built-in standards. I don't know if that's one or not as far as what's in there, but there are things that still, I don't want to say limit, but there are things that are required of the recovery residence, but I'm not sure if that's one or not.
Okay. And it seems that the, the words, the phrase "court ordered" has been removed from all the definitions of the new, in, in the new definitions. Is, is that your understanding as well, and I'm assuming that was intentional?
I'm not, I'm not for sure about that. I don't know if that was intentional or not. You're saying in the new definition-
In the new definitions, the words "court ordered," which were part of the previous two, both of the previous definitions for recovery were, were very clearly identified as part of the definition. It's not identified, I don't believe, in any way here.
Right. I, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's separate from this.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, am I-
It may be in some other statute.
Am I okay to say that, Andy? I mean, I don't, I think that's completely separate from this. It would be a separate use at that point in time.
I'm just looking at, if you look at the original definitions of the one, of the old that got removed?
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, it's my understanding that this is based directly on what the, the state adopted as part of their regulations. So I, I understand what you're saying. It doesn't mention court order. I don't know what the thinking was at the, the state level, like why that was or was not included-
Okay.
-in the definition. in the definition.
All right. Great. Thank you.
So along those lines, I mean, really, other than just kind of having it be in line with the current statute, right? I mean, it doesn't look like there's much by way of other changes substantively that, on the recovery piece versus the sober living.
No, on the recovery piece and sober living, I think it just improves Covington zoning regulations, because basically, as been mentioned, that the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act say you can't treat a sober living home any differently than you do a residential home. In the prior definitions, they had two different definitions. Sober living with less than six, and another one with more than seven, and they allowed, you know, more than seven only in limited areas. They allowed less than six in more areas. Well, if you don't put a number of individuals that can live in a home in a single-family home, you can't do it for sober living. So they got rid of that, which is good. And they pretty much permitted those homes in every residential district, which is good. And, but the only problem is they allow, which their counsel needs to look at, they allow certain residential dwelling units in mixed use and commercial zones, but they don't allow sober living homes.
Okay.
But it is a step in the right direction.
All right, good. That's helpful. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Simpson?
So you, your additional information that you gave at the end referencing the KRS documentation and the recovery residency definition, you're, you're stating that the City of Covington should consider, or they should add these two items, add recovery residence to all zones, and also add group home under social services to all zones. You're, you're saying that that's what Covington should do, or just look at the, consider it?
So the first, if I'm on the right slide?
Yeah.
Am I on the right slide? Okay. So the city may wish to just add KRS, that actual verbiage of KRS 222.500 in the actual definition, so it's just a reference to the KRS itself. And then as far as the definition, it should end in a period rather than a semicolon. And that's it.
And then the next slide, and then Covington's new proposed regulations, add recovery residency to all zones that permit residential dwellings?
That only get more in compliance with the sober living and, and things like that, yeah.
Okay.
Leading those out and putting those in.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. I have to sign a sheet, but I'm, oh, yeah, I do. Sorry. I've just, our applicant has signed up, Caitlin Bryan with the city.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Bryan. I'm the Regulatory Services Manager with the City of Covington at 20 West Pike Street. And the purpose of the text amendment was just to align more closely with the state statutes and then clean up some other things that had been causing some hiccups for us. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Simpson?
This isn't going to displace any current sober living facilities that are already in Covington. And also, with the, with my question to Ms. Bessie, are you okay with this additional information, the items that were, that the City of Covington should take into consideration?
So I shared the staff report with our legal counsel before the meeting today. For item one, about adding the KRS statute to the definition, legal counsel did not want us to have that in there, just because it's a hot topic, and there have been several amendments in the last couple of years, so they didn't want to keep changing, have to keep updating the number. Number two, to add a period instead of a semicolon. Sure, you got it. Section three, our legal counsel believes that the KRS 100 984 is covered by our residential care facility definition, which is allowed in all residential zones. And then as far as the zones that it's disallowed, those were the same zones as before that the sober living homes were disallowed. So we're just continuing the zones that we're used to having that use in them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had a quick question on the one regarding the exemption from the zoning permits, not to be deemed to grant authorization for any work to be done in violation of the code. I'm just curious what drove that. Clearly, somebody saw, read it and said, well, I can, I can do something and, you know, that, that they really couldn't, but can you enlighten us a little bit, just?
Yeah. So every day, we get calls from citizens saying, do I need a permit for this? And so sometimes the answer to that question is no, go ahead. However, then it becomes a code enforcement issue when they go and put said incidental structure right up on their neighbor's house, or right up on the street, whatever. So even though it technically was below the square footage or whatever, that it did not need a permit, it still needs to follow the city ordinance.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thanks for sticking around. Okay. Let's recess the public hearing for discussion among commissioners. Looks like a lot of good cleanup stuff and very thoughtful feedback to share with Covington, especially as it relates to the, the riverfront multi-use area. Anybody have anything else on it?
Nope.
I share concerns with legal counsel with regard to the ADA and Fair Housing Act. So I would just emphasize that, that I do have concerns for approving something that is not compliant with federal law. It gives me a bit of pause.
Well, I mean, we're not, it just hasn't gone as far, right? I mean, isn't, isn't, I mean, the viol, the potential violation would be there's other districts that, that they could have included, had this as a permitted use, right? And that, that didn't go that far.
It didn't go as far as I think it should have.
Yeah.
It's going a lot further than it did before towards compliance.
Yeah.
So it is a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
It improves compliance, but in my opinion, it doesn't get all the way there.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else? All right. We'll return to the public hearing. Any clarifications needed? If not, we'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
Yeah. Commissioner Simpson?
With reference to file number PC 250009, I move to approve the text amendment based on the facts and the considerations contained in the staff report and based on testimony of staff and witnesses present at the public hearing.
I'll second.
All right. Second by Commissioner Burley. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Burley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Darple?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis? Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes, but I would note that I think further compliance is necessary.
Thank you. Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
And did I get Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion is approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. As a reminder, the Park Hills matter was tabled until next month, so that brings us to file number PC-25-0011-TX. City of Erlanger, per Mark Collier, City Administrator, the request is a text amendment to the Erlanger zoning ordinance removing a requirement that all new dwelling units must have at least one attached or detached garage within the RMF residential multifamily zone. Mr. Dembo?
All right. Thank you very much. And again, for the record, I'm Patrick Dembo with PDS staff. And again, this is a text amendment to remove the garage requirement from multifamily. So in 1986, the City of Erlanger adopted a new zoning ordinance. Staff was favorable, stating that the proposed zoning ordinance was generally consistent with the model ordinance that was there at that time, with some exceptions. And one of those exceptions was the requirement that a minimum of one attached or detached garage for each dwelling unit in all residential zones except for mobile home park overlay zones and housing for the elderly. So again, staff was favorable at the time of the new zoning ordinance, but they wanted to note that exception. In 2021, the City of Erlanger adopted another new zoning ordinance, part of Z 21, and the subject standard was carried over from the previous ordinance and included as a character standard. So the character standards include a provision that a minimum of one attached or detached garage shall be required for each dwelling unit that receives a zoning permit after September 24th, 1986, for initial construction of that dwelling unit. The standard is required in each of the single-family zones, the residential mixed, the residential multifamily, and the mixed use zones. This request will remove the requirement from the residential multifamily zone. Staff is providing a favorable recommendation on the proposed text amendment. The proposed text amendments are appropriate and reasonable, requiring each dwelling unit with a, within a multifamily development to have an associated garage is unreasonable and a unique requirement within Kenton County. This requirement is a carryover from the previous zoning ordinance from 1986. And again, it was noted at the time that staff was unfavorable to that inclusion. And this require, of this requirement, and this requirement was also not included within the Z 21 blueprint that was meant for all the other communities. So some additional information, the city should consider removing this requirement from all other zones to help eliminate any possible barriers to housing. And as you can see on the chart, they, the other zones that this is a requirement in. And I'd be happy to take questions. Any questions?
All right. Any questions? All right. We're good.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallin?
I have experience at Erlanger, Department of Defense.
Well, thank you. All right. Let us recess the public hearing for discussion among commissioners. Straightforward, no issues, right? Okay. Let's return to the public hearing. Any clarifications needed? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Herman, who wants to make it?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Commissioner Simpson?
With reference to file number PC 250011, I move to approve the text amendment based on the facts and the considerations contained in the staff report and based on the testimony of staff and witnesses present.
All right. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vaughn. First was by Commissioner Simpson. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Darple?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham?
Yes.
Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
And it is approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. All right. That ends our public hearing section, reports from committees, executive. I did update committee assignments. I didn't really remove folks, but I, I increased committee sizes for Direction 2030, subdivision review, and Z 21 from six members to seven, just one, to keep, you know, people more involved, and then two, just to help in case we had issues with quorum that, that assists us in that regard. So, let's see, reports from, let's see. Oh, well, I guess other committee reports, Direction 2030 implementation?
Just, we're going to have a, an implementation committee on the 14th. We're going to talk about further discussion on our benchmarks that we're trying to see about implementing. And also, we're going to have an update from our consultants who are helping us with our second step in facilitating and coming aligned housing in the county.
All right. Sounds good. Subdivision review. Z 21.
We had approved Park Hills Z 21, but they have now changed it, so we're anticipating having another meeting prior to the November meeting. And we're also trying to schedule Edgewood at the same time, but so, Z 21 members, we're going to be meeting before the November meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Date to be determined.
Okay. Reports from commission members. Reports from legal counsel.
Nothing to report.
Reports or announcements from staff.
Just one announcement. It was last month I mentioned that there's some upcoming KLC, House Bill 55 training. When's the last date they need to let you know by panel?
I'd like to let you know by October 24th. I'll have to go through the registration. I know a lot of them have ended up. I do have all of those names. I can run down if you want, but I have these names. Registration, I will start doing on the 27th, and you'll get individual leads to that.
I would just, so, yeah, October 24th. The one thing that I would mention is when we sign you up for things, we sign you up using your KCPC email account, not your personal email account. So any sort of confirmation, links to webinars, things like that, will go to your KCPC account. So please be sure to, to check that for any relevant information, and that's all I have.
And that's the October 29th.
Correct.
Date. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any general correspondence, any new business? Any public comments? All right. How about a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
First by Commissioner Darple.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?